We have forum now. So it's 5:44 and I'm going to call the Mashpee Public Schools Business Meeting of March 20th, 2024 to order. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Mashpee Public Schools recognize and honor the many generations of Wampanoak people who have lived, who live and have been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Okay. Next item is to ratify the agenda of March 20th. So I will entertain a motion.
We'll make that motion.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
That we do not have a representative.
Correct. I'm sorry. Yes. I was going to go for the second. Sorry. That's okay. So we have a motion. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. And as Superintendent DeBoer noted, item six will not be taking place as we do not have a representative here from the tribe. Hearing any future, any further discussion, I'll call to vote. Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Anyone for public comment?
Not at this time.
All right. Thank you. And now we have the highlight of every meeting, our student presentation tonight, and we'll turn it over to Principal Switzer.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. I'm going to be really brief. So this is the majority of our student council behind us. They do some awesome things at our school for all of our students, and they're just too good not to highlight. Also, I will say, this is all them. I asked them probably three weeks ago if they would do it, and I did not check in with them until today, which is awesome, and they really are doing a fantastic job. Before we hear from them, quick shout out to Mr. Williams and Mrs. Majacamo, who are the student council, our staff who support our student council. They're awesome. And just thank you. They're always willing to stay late and work on these kind of presentations and kind of social in those evenings. So thanks to both of you. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Karina Russo, who is our president.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Karina Russo, and I am the president of the student council. Here with me today, I have Chase, who is vice president, Sam, who is treasurer, along with Matea, Daphne, Addie, Mia, Aiden, Patrick, and Matthew. And we are part of the student council for 2023 and 2024. Here in these pictures, that's, that's all of us. This is, that's the Christmas parade float. We will get into that later. And as I said, the executive board is made up of Hyanny, Sam, Chase, and I. And the rest of us are made up, we are fifth and sixth graders working together. Here's beginning of school me when I was making my campaign speech for president. That's basically, the whole executive board has done that to say why we were running for and why we think we were, we would make good executive board.
Hi, I am Matea Kelty. I am in fifth grade and I'm part of, and am a part of student council. We, Student Council, impacts Quashnet. Student Council works to improve our school and community by representing the voices of the students. This is a picture of all of us. Get it like just in a meeting. So student council is made up of multiple subcommittees that we all work in. Some of them we have are fundraising, kindness events, spirit committee, recycling slash treks, winter float, executive board, KCC recess helpers, and teacher appreciation. Here is, these are some sixth graders helping with the second grade recess. We really love it. That's a spirit week. Everyone loves to do that. It's really fun. And down on the right, there's people, I think we're just doing a fundraising project then.
Hello, I'm Sam Berth, and I'm treasurer. And one of our subcommittees is fundraising. We did a hat and hood fundraiser over the month of January on pretty much every single Friday. We raised over $300, which we put towards our kindness social for students. And coming up, we have the Night to Shine on April 4th. We will be selling popcorn and water for $1 each. These are some pictures from Spirit Week and other fun activities we've done.
Hello, I'm Aiden Mangold. I'm a fifth grade student, as part of student council. So these are some of our kindness events. We've done kindness week. We put sticky notes on students' lockers. So when they came back the next day, they have a sticky note with a compliment on it. We did a catered teachers lunch. So there were sandwiches, chips, waters, and then later in the afternoon, we had cookies and brownies for dessert. We did a kindness social. We had over 100 people participate. We did kindness bingo, minute to win at games, which were a huge success, karaoke, kindness shout outs, food, and refreshments. This picture here is, I think, a sixth grader with the second graders during KCC recess.
So hi, I'm Daphne Yazzi, part of student council, and we also do spirit event subcommittees. So we have steam night. For that, we do glitter jars, battleships. We helped set up and clean up for that. We did pasta dinner, which we helped decorate, and we also have many spirit weeks. On the left in the photo, we have a picture from pasta dinner. In the middle, we have a class doing spirit week. And on the right, we have glitter jars from steam night.
Hi, I'm Chase Seal, vice president of student council. And in the treks subcommittee, we gather plastic from around the school in bins and bring it to Stopman Shop. And after that, Stopman Shop brings it to a film company. And when we reach a certain weight goal, we get a new thing. And last year, we, we raised over 200 pounds, which got us that coat hanger. And in this picture, you can see us delivering the plastic to Stopman Shop. And in this, this is us at Stopman Shop.
So in December 2023, we did a winter float of student council, and student council members stayed after school to create decorations. Planning took over two months and preparation took over two weeks to get all the supplies. Students participated in the Mashpee Christmas Parade. We passed out candy and we stayed to 7:00 PM the night before to get the float ready for the next day. This, wait, hold on. This picture here is us during the parade on float. This is us getting ready to go. This is us the night before getting the float ready for the next day. And this is us waiting again.
Hi, I'm Addie Lambert. I'm a sixth grader. And for KCC recess helpers, the fifth grader, fifth graders help with the first grade, sixth grade helps with second grade, and this determines on when our recess times are. We basically just play with them and have fun with them, and we teach them games, and they sometimes teach us fun games. We're their role models, and they love it when we're there, and we really appreciate doing it for them. These are some pictures with the positive sign Thursday signs of some of our student council members and the first and second graders.
Hello, I'm Patrick O'Montain, and we do a lot of things in student council, like campaign videos and speech elections. We do public speaking opportunities to classes and grade levels, and we also do volunteering in classrooms. The pictures are the campaign video or the, the campaign speeches from all of the, from all of the people who got a place in the, in the thing. We still have a lot to come in student council, like Night to Shine Teacher Appreciation Week, KCC Field Day, International Week, Quashnet Field Day, fifth versus sixth grade soccer match, and sixth grade students first staff hockey game. And we, and we still have a lot more spirit weeks to come.
My name is Matthew Hooper, and thank you for coming. And any questions about student council?
Thank you. I'll let my fellow committee members start if they have any questions.
So first off, I just want to say, wow, I am impressed by you guys. You guys are doing incredible things. And sitting across from you, I'm like, when can we hire you into the workforce? Very intelligent, very smart, a lot of compassion, a lot of community connectedness. It's incredible. I have a two-year-old over at KCC and saw her in one of the pictures, and she's talked about you guys and being there. So thank you for that. You make a huge difference. And I think I have seen some of the committee members, or the council members, I should say, at, at KCC Field Day last year, and y'all made it what it was last year. So, so thank you for everything that you do.
I just want to reiterate what Dan said. Great job and really appreciate what each and every one of you are doing. It's nice to see that you're stepping up and taking a leadership role within the school, and we definitely appreciate that. I just have one question for the sixth graders. What would you say to someone in, I guess, the third grades that's coming to Quashnet next year to encourage, to encourage them to participate in this student council?
Well, what I would say is, this really is a great school for opportunities like this. Like, we're lucky that you have a student council for not only just sixth graders, but and eighth graders too. Like, for all coming from fifth grade, I was able to be in student council, and that really helped me more when I was younger, so where I was doing it. And I, well, to any of the third graders or fourth graders, I would totally encourage them to get into stuff like this, because it just, it feels really good to be a part of the school community. It feels really good to give back, and it's just a great feeling to be involved.
Thank you.
Andrew, do you have the student advisory council? Do you have anything you want to ask or say?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to just say that you guys are all doing a fantastic job. Your experiences that you form in Quashnet will stick with you through high school. So kind of try and use this opportunity as a springboard to continue your leadership and teach others of the joy of leadership. I think you're doing a wonderful job.
And for those of you who don't know, Andrew's a senior at the high school. So he is the student representative to the school committee, which is something, as you get older, you could also be a part of, because we have a special student committee that works with us in the school committee, and Andrew's their representative, who comes to all our meetings and gives us the student perspective on what we do. So, thank you. But yeah, I'm going to echo what everybody else said. That was an awesome presentation, and I'm really glad to see that you guys are doing so much, and it's pretty cool. Like, it's very exciting, and I'm sure you guys are liking it. But I did have a question. Was there like a hit at karaoke night? Like, what was the number one song? Where's the, like, who did the best? You don't have to answer all of them, but you could pick one. The buck.
There was definitely some Backstreet Boys stuff in the day.
All right. Throwing it back. Okay. All right. All right. That's awesome. Well, again, thank you all for coming and keep up the good work, because like, you heard, you're making a difference. So please keep doing that, because the world needs more of that. So thank you. And I think Superintendent DeBoer, don't go anywhere, because Superintendent DeBoer would like a picture, and I think the Mashpee M is probably a great background for them.
Who is surprised that Mrs. DeBoer wants a picture?
With the committee members. And the advisors.
And the principal.
If you want to be in it, Mrs. DeBoer, I can take it.
I'm not going to be in your way, am I?
No.
Oh, good.
Do you have a standing? I think you guys can stand like right here. You guys command a little bit, like.
This is Louis Mr. Calling.
That is good. There you go. Look at that. Perfect. All right. Ready? I did like 10. Great job, Sophie. Thank you. So thank you. Good job, Karen. Thanks.
They were so well spoken. They were so well spoken, you could hear every word.
I got a postman, this is all great. You know what I needed today? You got this.
I have shine on the bright, like it does.
That's so good for you. Keep up the great, keep up the great work.
Yeah. You got this.
Don, what was your sticky?
I think it was the same thing.
No, it's not yours.
Yours is special.
That's amazing. You are amazing. Look at that, and you are.
What was yours?
You are the best. How about you, Ms. Vinniski?
Ms. Vinniski, what was your, what was your post-it note?
Oh, and you are.
Those post-it notes really do make a difference.
They honestly do.
I don't know the post-it notes for the sixth graders. They were really nice, I like them.
Random act of kindness. Always there for that. Okay. Up next, we have the approval of two sets of minutes. We'll start with February 7th. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Madam Chair, I would recommend that we defer to this until the next meeting when we have more representatives.
Okay. Both sets or just the set of the 7th? And you want to defer both?
Yes.
Okay. Dan, do you have any objections to that?
No, I'll second that.
Okay. Minutes approval will be deferred to our next meeting. Okay. And next up, we have our student advisory committee representative, Mr. Kelly. The floor is yours.
Not too much has happened from the last meeting. Winter sports have ended, spring sports are starting, everyone's excited about that. Music High School's concert next Wednesday. Senior Presentation Night is on April 1st. If you want to come out and see all the cool things that seniors have done for the senior projects or internships, I'd highly recommend that for anyone in the public, not just the school committee. It's a wonderful night. I haven't had too many complaints or like, really conversations with like students of the event, like, obviously they are not happy about the cell phones and the bring your own device policy, but I've tried to just explain to them, like, it's for, it's for a reason. It's not just because they want to torture you. They have better things to do with their lives. Yeah.
Quick question on that one, though. Are you finding that your classmates are still struggling with connectivity issues with their Chromebooks?
It depends on the day.
Depends on the day.
Yes. And also depends on like Chromebook, because some people have newer Chromebooks than others. But it still takes me a while to open stuff. I've known some people that it takes like half an hour to open like a Google Doc or something, but overall, it has gotten better.
Can I make a suggestion? Is that okay? Because there is a system in, there's a system in place to address this, that I don't know, maybe the students aren't reading their emails or hearing the announcements, but they are meant, if you have an old Chromebook, you are meant to go see Mrs. Brooks.
Yeah.
And if you, the best way to get to her, to get a new Chromebook, is to email her and ask her when she will be there, because she works in all three schools. And then go, please go and swap out your device for a new one. We have them. The tech department is ready to go. The students have been notified of this, and yet we're still hearing these complaints. So I guess I'm just going to keep pushing. Please, 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 go ask Mrs. Brooks for what we can do, so that it doesn't take a half hour for you to load a Google Doc, because that's insane.
Yeah.
And we have the tools in place for that not to exist.
Well, and that was kind of why I was asking, because I'm hearing tests are still tricky to complete and load questions and move through. I've heard the same thing. It's on certain days, but I've also heard if you clear your cache or wipe out like stuff from sixth grade that might still be in your Google Drive, that might also help. So I guess that was, my other question is, you know, if it's, if it's going, okay.
So can you do that for me?
Yeah.
Pass the message?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm so grateful.
Yeah. Because I remember something like that, but I don't think I have.
No, and I get it. You guys are inundated by a lot of information, and so I'm, you're here to.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have at least one, maybe two. We'll see. One in regard to communication. So, and I think this is a classic example that you just reiterated here, hope in regard to kids not knowing that they need to turn in and exchange your Chromebooks. And I guess the question that I posed to Andrew is, I'm not sure what the form of that communication was, but do you believe that we're adequately communicating that to students? Do we need to use alternative forms? Do we need to repeat it often and frequent?
I think that we were given adequate communication. I think that there is a range of different attitudes when it comes to checking your email, paying attention to announcements. So part of that burden does fall on the student to check your email, to follow up if you have an old Chromebook. And I believe that we are getting enough emails, and it was on the announcement, it was on, I think, the Daily Message, Ms. P. Yeah. Part of it, I think, might be just students not checking those or just wanting to complain about something, if I'm being completely honest. But I believe that. I believe that there is enough communication given to the students.
Does the old fashioned word of mouth work within the school or not for stuff like that?
It works for stuff like that. It just needs people talking about it, which people weren't really. I don't know why, but they weren't.
Maybe that might be something that the student council could reinforce.
I wonder if even putting like a sign at the front of every classroom or by a door that says, "Don't forget, if your Chromebook doesn't work right, email Ms. Brooks."
Yeah.
You know, like something that's visually there that they can see.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And the other question that I had, which you still kind of reiterated that there's issues regarding the technology not meeting the needs on a timely basis, because you don't have that long in a class if it takes half an hour to load during test, right?
Yeah.
And I know we talked about it at a prior meeting, and this is where my long-term memory cuts off. I don't recall what the solution was or what we talked about as far as a follow-up to that, and I will ask, pose that question to the superintendent.
Yeah, I can talk about it, but he said that he was asking you. I can start. I was directing to Dr. Hanscom because she works with the tech department regularly. We did purchase additional Chromebooks so that they were more up-to-date models, and those were to get into the hands of the 11th and 12th graders in particular. We have also, I think, been experiencing some Wi-Fi issues in various pockets of all three buildings, and we are looking into that, so there may be a little bit more work required there. So I don't know if there's anything else. Yeah, no, I think there have been challenges in Mashpee in general with Wi-Fi over the last few weeks. And so Mr. Maroney and his team are phenomenal, and they're always sort of looking at where do we need more drops and so forth. I don't think it's a drop issue at this point. I think it's been a Comcast issue. And so he and his team and our contractor, Crockett, Mr. Crockett, sorry, everybody just calls him Crockett, have been working to sort of figure out what we can do. But I would say that 98% of it, that's, the 98% of it that's not related to Chromebooks not being turned in and replenished is outside of the control of the, of the district. It's Comcast issues.
Okay. And the new Chromebooks have sufficient power to handle?
We are working with a very small number of students who are struggling, they have not turned in their Chromebooks and gotten new ones, but even if they do, they're saying that there will be an issue with some dual enrollment stuff. And again, I go back to, we have asked those students to connect with Ms. Brooks, so that we can purchase whatever it is that they need, so that they can do their work, and so that, I'm not trying to be a jerk, but I think Andrew said it right. There is an onus on the student to actually follow the directions that are given, so that we can provide them what they need.
And if students are having issues with those new, even if they get a new one and they're still having those issues, they should still continue to reach out to Mrs. Brooks.
Yeah, Mrs. Brooks, Ms., oh, what, her name is Mary is her first name. Mrs. Murphy is the tech we hired for the high school. She started in, I think, January, maybe it was. She does two days a week. And she's there two days a week. Mrs. Brooks is there three days a week. Mr. Maroney is there. So there's, if there's not someone there, that's why I encourage kids to reach out through email, because then there will be somebody there when you need them. So yes, if there is an issue, usually that means it's a defective device and we would send it back, but our team is on top of it. They're amazing, and they can only do what they know about.
Of course. Do you have any questions? I had one other question pursuant to this. I know there's talk about the transmitter, the radio transmitters.
Repeaters.
That, is that going, do we know, will that interfere? If we're having Wi-Fi issues in part of the buildings already, do we know, are there studies, can we find out? I know I'm asking a weird question, but you know, if we're replacing those repeaters that's needed, or the town is replacing, not us, but will that interfere further with wherever the Wi-Fi?
I have no idea.
Tricky areas might be, or will it help improve that? Like, commercially?
It's a good question.
Maybe it'll help them.
I have no expertise in that. I would like to think that where it is something that enhances a radio frequency, that there might be some benefits to Wi-Fi, but I don't know if there'll be conflicting invisible forces working there. I don't know. I can ask Mr. Maroney, though, to do some research, for sure.
Just out of curiosity, because if we're going to be, I mean, obviously, safety first, but.
Do we need a workaround? Let's see, we can find that out.
Do we get ahead of that if we do?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I will check in with him. May I add something? In terms of the communication, what Andrew said in terms of the onus on the students, I wanted to just give a shout out to Casey Pinsonalt or Ms. P., as Andrew referred to her, and the Builders Club. They put out a phenomenal daily series of slides, is how it's shown, that has pretty much everything you'd need to know, and it is shown in the lunchroom. It is also in homeroom time. I don't know if it's actually emailed to students, but accessing it on their computer. So, so. And it's running in the hall. So they could look at it multiple times if they want to. It has like what after-school clubs are, it has everything. It's very thorough and visually attractive. You don't have to like really dive into a bunch of text to get the message. So thank you to Ms. Pinsonalt. And Mrs. Taylor. And Mrs. Taylor and the Builders Club.
Email that every day. Sorry, I was just checking to make sure.
I know, I get it every day. I just, yep.
Okay. All right. I guess one other quick question for you, because we have, I think our next meeting is with the full advisory committee, is it not? I think.
April 8th, I think.
I believe so, yes.
I guess if you want to see if there are anything, if there is anything that you need to talk about, if you want to start talking about recruitment for next year, because I know some of you seniors are starting to make that exit plan.
Yeah.
If, if that's something to put on, and I'm sure we'll probably have like a meeting together to agenda and plan.
We are starting to work on that and like, not scale people, but get more participation, kind of building more visibility through, we do the elections for student councils. So just how can we increase our visibility, increase participation through that?
I mean, technically with the general law, your committee is also supposed to be elected, separate from. So I mean, I don't know when the election cycle for student council is, if it's before the end of the year or.
I think after I leave, so sometime after May 7th.
As long as it's in June per the, per the Mash general law, I think we'll be okay. But I don't, if you need help or if they need help, you know, we can work that out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Can I correct that the date for the student, the next meeting with student advisory is the 3rd? April 8th is the next Zoom quarterly drop-in.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Andrew. Okay, next item, we have a tuition waiver that came in.
Yes, so I'm, I'm going to talk just because it really should only say that we have a request from a 10th grade student AS who would like to remain for the balance of this school year in Mashpee. We do not have choice seats there. The family does intend to apply for choice in grade 11. If there are seats available, they relocate it to Falmouth.
I'll make a motion that we approve the tuition waiver request for the remainder of the FY '24 school year for student AS in the 10th grade.
Thank you, Don.
And I will second that.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will move to vote. Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
And I also am a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, next, we have a overnight class of 2024 field trip to Camp Farley for senior week, which that is a fun camp.
So I believe we have Ms. Sores here, who is the senior class advisor.
Good evening. Hello. So I think, did you get the paperwork for the proposed trip? So as part of our senior week, the students, I come on behalf of the students, would like to do an overnight camp experience at Camp Farley. We are planning on, regardless of the overnight, using the field there for field games. We're gonna have the Army Reserves come, and they put on like kind of like a boot camp type thing, dinner, campfire. And then a lot of the kids stayed there as, when they were younger, and so it's kind of like a reminiscent kind of nostalgia overnight that they would like to have. And so that is the request.
Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request, and then we can have discussion after, if we want to do that.
Andrew, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right, any discussion?
Since this is a overnight, I'm assuming, and I know I shouldn't do that, but I'm assuming that the chaperones or adults that you're planning to have will also have overnight responsibility.
Yes. And there's enough cabins to house the adults, in addition to the night security that we would hire, to stay awake for the full night.
Second page, no, this page there, they list everything. The parents that are going to be, they'll all be quarried.
They'll all be quarried, just like volunteers, right.
Andrew, are you ready for Gaga? Like, are you guys gonna have a massive Gaga tournament or something?
I think even Lady Gaga.
Okay, Gaga after me? I've never played Gaga before.
It wasn't a thing when we were, I don't remember it either, but I know at Camp Farley, it is a thing, and how far, if you bet at Camp Farley, that Gaga pit is like a place to be...
I went to Lady Gaga, I was like, well, what is happening? Because I'm gonna volunteer.
No, no. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll move to vote. Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
I also am a yes, so enjoy your overnight at Camp Farley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, next, on the agenda, we have the introduction of Bonnie Brady, our new soon-to-be Mashpee Middle High School principal, so superintendent de Boer.
So I am gonna read the introduction. I know it feels like Bonnie's been with us for a while, because we did get her signed early in February, but she still is working, so we're happy to have her here in Mashpee this evening. So I'm gonna read this. "We are pleased to introduce you to Bonnie Brady, our Mashpee Middle High School principal, beginning July 1, 2024. Ms. Brady is an educator with more than nine years of experience in building-based leadership. For the past 20 years, Ms. Brady has dedicated her career to the Brockton Public Schools, her alma mater, and the school district that raised her. Throughout her career as an educator and leader in the Brockton Public Schools, Ms. Brady has cultivated strong relationships with all stakeholders, ensured a safe and orderly learning environment, honored diversity through inclusive practices, and through her own practices demonstrated a belief that all students can excel. She is a proactive and strategic problem solver who keeps students in the forefront of decision-making, and we are excited to welcome her to Team Mashpee. Ms. Brady holds a Bachelor of Arts in English from Bridgewater State College, a Master of Arts in Teaching from the University of Massachusetts, and she has completed postgraduate coursework in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies at the University of Massachusetts. Ms. Brady taught English at Brockton High School for nine years. During eight of those years, she also served as the International Baccalaureate Coordinator. After teaching for nine years, Ms. Brady then became the Associate Principal of Curriculum and Instruction at the Plouffe Middle School in Brockton, a position she held for nine years. She is currently the Associate Principal of Academics at Brockton High School. Input collected from surveying our Mashpee Middle High School students, staff, and parent guardians in regards to the portrait of a Mashpee Middle High School principal informed us that stakeholders want a leader who is kind, fair, has integrity, is an effective communicator, and a problem solver. They want a principal who will build and maintain a positive school climate, who has strong communication and interpersonal skills, who values stakeholder voice, and who honors diversity, provides equity, and ensures inclusion. Expertise in curriculum instruction and assessment, and successful experience as a middle high school teacher and administrator are also important to our stakeholders. Ms. Brady embodies this portrait of a Mashpee Middle High School principal. She expressed in her interview and onsite follow-up visit how important it is to make connections and to build positive relationships with all students, all families, our staff, and our Mashpee community. Her experience working with diverse student populations, her ability to make timely and data-informed decisions, her humor, her positivity, and the importance she places on leading by example will positively impact not only the Mashpee Middle High School, but also the Greater Mashpee Public School and our Mashpee community. Ms. Brady shared that when her own high school experience was challenging, the fine arts department is what, quote, "saved her and made her feel like she belonged." She plans to be the biggest cheerleader for the Mashpee Middle High School, helping to highlight and celebrate everything MMHS. Principal Brady will be another reason why it's great to be in Mashpee, so we're very happy that she's here this evening.
Thank you.
Welcome. So after that very wonderful introduction, please go ahead and share whatever you'd like to share.
Well, that, those are kind of tough shoes to fill. That was a lot, and I appreciate the write-up. I'm really excited to be here tonight, and I'm super excited for next year. You know, I've had a long, a long 10 years of building leadership, I'm ready to be a principal, and three years ago, I bought a condo on the Cape, and it's always been my lifelong goal to work on the Cape, live on the Cape, and it's like a little girl's dream coming true. So I'm really excited, and I'm looking forward to the next chapter of my career.
And she wore her Mashpee blue.
I did, I did, because like, you know, it's a thing.
Do you have any questions?
No questions, just a pleasure to meet you and excited to see you, obviously, in our schools.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I'll save the questions till you're really here. But I do want to welcome you to Mashpee, and glad that you decided to come play in our little world, so thank you.
You too, thank you.
I'm just gonna echo those welcomes and say, you know, we're looking forward to having you, and Andrew, did you have anything?
I'm kind of the same, just we're very happy to have you, and we're very excited to see what you have to bring to our community.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the report of the superintendent, so superintendent de Boer.
Okay, first, we have a little bit of feedback from our professional development day. I'm really gonna, well, we do have Kalise Warnum on our half-day, which seems like a long time ago, but it was on March 4th. We continue to do the work with Dr. Warnum, and we're very grateful for the opportunity and the time that our community provides us in supporting our half-day schedule. And then on the 15th, we had a full PD day, and that was very productive. It started with each school actually visiting their reunification site, something we have not done in the past, just to build a little bit of sort of muscle memory in our staff. It was very helpful, some good ideas came from that experience. So the Quashnet School reunification site is the Boys and Girls Club, so obviously that was an easy walk for them. For the Coombe School, theirs is the Senior Center, and also, so they had sort of the space first, we had to coordinate well with those partners. And the Mashpee Middle High School, where originally, and for many years, we have said it was the Mashpee Public Library in our emergency response booklet, that did not prove to be where we landed in our final planning. So the Mashpee Middle High School's reunification site is now the Senior Center as well. There's not likely to be a time when all students would be there, because if something happened at one school, the other schools would shelter in place. So that the space is very adequate when you take away that dividing door for both populations. So having the teachers, actually the whole staff, it wasn't just teachers, go there and get comfortable with it. We are going to be actually taking students there with two drills that we're doing in April, so that they can become familiar with that. But understanding, there is no right response to a scenario, and we try to make sure our teachers understand that they do the best or make the best choice, and depending on what the situation is, some students and staff will evacuate a building and some may shelter in place. They just need to know where they are going to head to with the Mashpee Middle High School, because they're a little further away. Initially, if they needed to evacuate the building and find shelter, they're gonna probably go into the woods, and we have told them, and the police have ensured all three schools that no matter where you run and hide, they will find you and help you. But students and staff know that their reunification site is the Senior Center. What's good about those places is the ability for, in a post-situation where parents are picking up their students, having that safety complex and the ability for the fire and police to sort of have that entrance with a plan, that parking would be at the library and a very orderly way to connect students with their families. So it's a first step sort of in a much more realistic practice that we haven't had before. So that was in the morning, then we all met back at the high school, and Katie S. R. O. Hennessy provided an update on Alice training for the whole staff. And then that was followed, what I would consider the highlight of the day, which was Mr. Michael Bonner, he is a teacher from Atlanta. He is extremely entertaining and insightful, and was, his message was just sort of perfect for what our teachers need, actually, our whole staff needed at this time of the year, and we were very grateful to have him as well. We had great box lunches for lunch, and then following lunch, Dr. Curly led special education staff in a review of the new IEP, and the rest of the staff was in the auditorium for a program presented on sexual abuse, it was called Enough Abuse Program. So somewhat heavy topics that make it a little bit of a challenge for the day, but important and necessary, so we are grateful that we had that day.
Quick question, for the April drills that involve the students, I'm assuming communication will be sent out to the parents, like a separate kind of communication, so they understand, like, prepare the students.
Yes. We have laid out the, I think there's three remaining drills this year that we're going to be doing that fall under sort of the Alice umbrella, but they're not surprises, and the whole staff knows the time, the dates, and we will make sure families know as well. In a true situation where if we had to evacuate the high school and head towards the reunification site, 151 would be closed down, so there would be ample space. I mean, luckily, we do have nice sidewalks on both sides now, but that, in a true scenario, we would not be dealing with traffic. Although when we do the drill, we will be dealing with whatever roadwork has kicked back up, apparently, we've been told.
I'm sorry, I also want to ask, how does that get communicated to the broader community? Yes, I would assume that.
We probably will put something out on social media that we are conducting sort of a drill. It's a fine balance between the notification and not wanting someone to take advantage of that situation, so we'll have to figure it out. I know that on our 151 sign, I, where orig, you know, back in the day, when we first had the sign, we used to put a lot of events happening at schools up. I don't anymore, because if it's a larger event where guests are coming, we can't control. So I've much more toned what we advertise publicly down a little bit.
To that point, I guess my question, like, I understand what you're saying, and I agree 100%. I'm wondering, though, if in terms of letting the community at large know, are you able to say on this date, but not necessarily the time, just so that they're aware that if they hear something on that day, just because we all know?
Well, so there's, there are three different days, we could just put, you know, drills are taking place on these days, won't give the time, I might not even say which school, because they're different.
No, exactly. Like, keep it vague, but at least say, on these days, if you see or hear something, like, it's not an emergency, it is a planned, like, I don't, almost a reverse 911 call, almost, to let the town, just so that the rumor mill...
Yeah, I know.
And I understand, and maybe that's the conversation we have later, but I guess just thinking about how things can be seen and interpreted, I guess.
I would recommend not even doing that specific, I would just say, this week...
Safety drills.
We're gonna, we're gonna be doing drills, and just leave it at that.
It's kind of like when the bases are prescribed for an announcement.
Exactly, because then you...
Then you don't call the fire department. I know, wouldn't do that.
But then you see all the, what's going on? I heard a loud, but like, you know, I guess to...
I think we want to just make sure we talk to the police before we agree to do it.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
I think they will have ideas that we have to, according to.
And even the town manager might have ideas on how to notify the community at large as well, so, sorry.
I have one question, so I probably won't put that in my report to students, yeah.
You can just say that we're gonna be having an upcoming, well, we're gonna have two that are traditional to what students are used to, where you hear something and you're told, something's happening in this hallway. That one, which is something very new to every student in the district, where you're actually gonna walk to the reunification site. So you can say it's coming, it's coming in April.
All right. So let's say drills are coming in April.
April and May is, yes, but April is the one that they actually go to.
April will be the new one.
Yeah.
The new, yes. Okay. Enrollment and personnel, you have on page 10, our enrollment. Any questions on that page?
Kindergarten enrollment is open, correct, online?
Yes, yes.
And are we seeing a good...
Oh, Principal O'Brien?
Sorry, I might be jumping into your chair, but kindergarten enrollment going well?
It is going well, we're projecting at least what we have this year, possibly a greater number.
Okay, that's great to hear, that there may be more.
It's still tentative, but the summer enrollments from the last couple summers, what we're expecting is around that 100.
Excellent.
Just one question, is pre-K, the summer's PS?
Yes.
Is pre, what's, where's the form?
It now says PS for preschool, as opposed to PK for pre-K.
Okay, the PS in terms of DESI includes everything below kindergarten, I believed, isn't it? I think it does.
Pre-school is the three-year-old.
Three-year-old.
And then pre-K.
It's a four-year-old.
Oh. So we're missing pre-K then, from this?
So we don't have the three-year-olds and the...
No, we have the three-year-olds, we don't have the four-year-olds. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the bottom, you're looking at the top.
Yeah, where, where...
The top has the pre-K, the bottom has the PS.
So the top, the 104 students includes the three-year-olds, correct?
I'm just not sure whether DESI actually tracks the three-year-old program, where it's not a requirement, I don't know, but the four-year-old program isn't either, so I'm talking without any...
We're looking at the, Principal, we're looking at this sheet, the enrollment sheet, I don't know if you've had that, but at the top, in the Coombe School, it lists it as pre-K with 104 students, and at the bottom, in the bigger, the October numbers, it lists PS with 92, and those are the numbers as of October 1st.
But that, but that 92 is from 2014, 15?
I'm sorry, yes.
You would, the most recent would be the 81 in 2223?
Either way, up top it says pre-K, down below it says PS.
We'll fix it, we'll make sure it's aligned.
Just try to clarify which, and then...
Well, just to point out, Mr. Myers, it has been that way for years, on this paper.
I can tell you, in Power School...
But we will make sure we figure this out.
And currently in Power School, there are 100 students in pre-K.
Which is the four-year-old program.
Which is the four-year-old program.
Okay. So that 104 pre-K is the four-year-olds?
That's what it says in Power School.
In Power School.
But I can find out from Christine Fisher, who does our data, how it's represented here.
So it's only the four-year-olds, it doesn't...
I don't think the preschool is not, the preschool three-year-olds are not separated in Power School.
Oh, then no, that's, so that's both.
It is the three and four.
I was gonna say, that is a lot of...
It was, I was...
Which was great.
Why qualify, I mean, let me check with Mrs. Fisher.
Okay.
So it's both, combined, 100.
But the bottom number only has three and above, we think, four-year-old and above?
This is the October 1st report. So the question is whether the PS column is the three and four-year-olds?
Yes, it is.
I would say that it is.
It is both, combined.
What would you, would you like it to be labeled P., pre-K?
If you just label them the same...
We will label... We will label them the same, Mr. Myers. That is an easy thing to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this chart? Lot of numbers on there.
While he's looking, I'll ask a question. This, unless you know it now. This, just some Cape Cod Tech enrollment numbers, those we know closer to September, correct? Or do you know them ahead of time? Like, do we know or have an idea of an estimate for next year?
We do, we will know who's been accepted. We don't necessarily who is actually going, but we do get that. In fact, I believe they probably have it in our guidance department now in terms of acceptance, just not who's going yet.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was said I bought you time. We can come back if you remember it.
No, I was just looking at the special education. It's challenging to figure out what is going on since it goes up, it goes down, it goes up.
You just described special education, my friend.
It's like a roller coaster. Someone smarter than you has to figure out if it's right.
Okay. All right.
If it's right? Are you kidding?
You said if it's right.
If it's right, it's right.
Okay. Next is personnel, just to welcome Angela Manning is our new Indian Education Grant Tutor for the KCC Coombe School. And then Brittany Crawford, Crawford is a paraprofessional long-term substitute at MMHS. We have two retirement, not retirements, resignations in this case, Brett Pals as a paraprofessional at MMHS and Amy Wyman as the Indian Education Grant Tutor for KCC.
Is there a new Indian educator? Oh, yeah, sorry, my apologies.
That's okay.
Met her, she's lovely.
Yes, she is lovely.
My brain's not working on also.
Okay, next we have administrator updates. So is there maybe Principal Brian who's not really feeling that well? So once she does present, we are giving her, her exit pass.
We actually said she shouldn't be here at all.
Yes.
But you know, it's so right.
Actually, we can give all of them an exit pass after they do their presentation update. Okay.
Well, thank you for sticking it out. If I had known, we could have bumped you forward.
And I'll keep my distance. I hope you can hear me for this mask, but I just felt it was safer. Yeah, so our enrollments are coming along quite well. It's really nice to see. And it's been wonderful to have the connection with our daycare programs around town, just so we could project who's actually coming as Mashpee residents. So I think we're looking really good for kindergarten next year and where we are. There has been so much going on at the Coombe School. We have been so busy. I would like to acknowledge our PTO. They sponsored a puppet show today for our preschool students who totally enjoyed it. They were rhyming, they were feeding a puppet, a little dog with bones, different color bones. And she just was so on the mark with the curriculum, but also a lot of social, emotional and caring comments. It was really wonderful. They also hosted multicultural game night last Thursday. And I really think it was one of the nicest events we have had for a long time. We had a lot of different families who came who don't often come. A lot of our EL families were present. And what was so nice is they brought their cultural food and everyone really enjoyed. You know how a buffet table draws a lot of, a lot of people and a lot of conversation? But the games that were put together were absolutely outstanding. We had some games taught in Spanish. We had Chinese games. We also partnered with the Wampanoag Tribe and Janaya Perry, the powwow princess was there to, to teach students how to play hubbub. It was just really lovely. And it wasn't often the events, you're shoulder to shoulder in the Coombe School. And we did have enough space this time to really be able to mingle. And it was very nice. And thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for participating in that event. It was great to welcome your whole family. So that was wonderful. And they also sponsored a visit from Karen Land, who competed in the Iditarod a couple of years ago. And she brought her sled and she had two of her dogs with her. One dog raced with her, one didn't. And it was really interesting because this dog is part Greyhound and I'm like, in Alaska? So it was just amazing to hear her story of the race. And those second graders, every one of them was in the gym and they were just riveted with her discussion and presentation was really quite something. And she left right at parent pickup and I was like, there's the sled! A bunch of parents got to see it too, which was really cool. And the best part of it is, along with this, Megan Smith, our librarian, has been reading Balto with the students. They actually have an author visit tomorrow virtually with someone who's actually out on the trail. But they all went home with their own copy of Balto, which was really great, of The Blue Dawn. So they were very, very excited about that. Some of the other things we have going on is, as the Quashnet Student Council talked about the recess connection, oh my gosh, it has just been so nice to see, first of all, my kids come from Quash, sorry, Mr. Switzer. But just seeing those kids come across that field. We wanted to shorten that field and I feel like we're succeeding. If we could just get rid of the geese, we'd all be really happy. But it really is, it has been a real success. So I'm really thrilled to see that, that coming together. And Mr. Pran has been really involved with that too. And just said the kids are really doing such a nice job facilitating basketball and soccer and different games out in, on the Cooms field, on playground area. The other thing that has come to, come up recently is we've been having difficulty with our PA system. And part of the culture at the Coombe School is the morning announcements. And they do the Coombe School pledge every morning. They do the pledge of allegiance. And it's really been such a part of the kids' experience at Cooms. So without having that PA system working properly, we have moved that to a video announcement. So now in Mr. Pran's office, the kids come sit around a table and they have the flag and they have things in the backdrop, some, some Cooms items. And they are projecting through Google Meet. And so every one of the classes is tuning in in the morning. And the teachers have reported how kids are listening more now and they're watching their friends and it's just, they're rock stars on the video and they're all dying to have a chance to do it. So that has been a really fabulous thing. We had Concert for Kindergarten yesterday, which was just delightful. The other connections that we've had, and it's been really wonderful for our kids. And Andrew, I don't know if you want to talk about that at all, but coming down and playing the math games with some of our students.
I mean, I can pick up from there. So as part of Wesley Donovan, his senior project, he started this program, I think it's called Math Buddies.
Math Buddies.
It's basically where a few high school seniors that have a direct study at the end of the day, go down to the KCC, yeah, the KCC, sorry.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. And they play math games with the students, help to teach them and kind of just build connection in the school community. I did it once. I plan on doing it again because it was so much fun seeing all their bright, smiling faces. And I found it really, they asked me a lot of questions about like, like high school, how's it going? Are you in college? Are you a teacher? So meaningful connection definitely was made there. And I think it's just good to have that between the schools.
Absolutely. And they are really curious of other kids and the conversations are great. We also welcomed the English Honor Society from the high school as well for Read Across America. And that was another wonderful event. And it was, it's just great to have our alumni come back. And they come in the building and it's just, oh. And we had quite a few of the middle school students who came for our multicultural game night too. And they ran a lot of those programs. So it's been really terrific. We've really enjoyed also welcoming our families, our, some of our bilingual families have been coming in and doing stories, reading to the students. And so we have a book in Portuguese, the same book in English, and the teacher is reading alongside the, the parent who is reading in Portuguese. And that has been really wonderful too. It's just opening up conversation and greater understanding and just giving all kids such a nice opportunity and just exposure. So we've just been really busy. But thank you. Does anyone have questions or can answer?
The PA, so with the PA system down and the workaround, sounds amazing. You're going to keep that workaround in place because it sounds like it's more engaging, it's more?
It is. And I think it was just, okay, let's try this, but it has gotten such a good response. I think we're going to stick with it. And then we were also thinking about moving that out and sharing that possibly with families as well, that link. Because I know, I would have loved to have seen my second grader or first grader, kindergartner, like being able to do those announcements. And what a great way to connect with our families. So we are trying to look in that direction too. We just want to make sure everybody's got it down.
Of course. Anybody else have any other questions for Principal O'Brien?
You may have said it earlier and I tuned it out unfortunately, but expectation in regard to preschool for next year?
Next year for preschool, we do, we are getting regular registrations. I don't have the numbers for preschool yet. They're, I'm, we're working on it, but I don't have those numbers. I'm working closer with who's going into K at this point. But the portal is open and we're hoping that those keep on coming. But I know there have been a lot of inquiries. We've also gotten a lot of inquiries just from the paper. I think parents see that and they look at it as daycare. And it's like, no, they have, you have to be a resident of Mashpee to attend the three-year-old pre-K program and the four-year-old pre-K program. So there's been a lot of education from the front office staff for families calling in because we get calls from multiple surrounding towns. It's like you need to be a resident of Mashpee.
Right. But as I recall, the three-year-old program is a very, is a limited program, correct?
It's.
Versus the four-year-old program is?
The four-year-old program is the full-day program. The three-year-old is there, there are half-days. So it's three half-day, four days, two, two mornings. Yeah, so it is different.
And the website does list that whole residency requirement and that there is no school choice of those two options?
It does.
I'm just reiterating that for?
Yes, it does list that and there are very specific directions. So the sooner people register, the more helpful it is. Yes.
No, I was just looking at the numbers from last year to this year. Now we're up 23 in preschool, but we're down in kindergarten, so.
Yeah. So kindergarten right now has an enrollment of 90 students. And we are projecting about 104 right now, but that certainly can change. We have 69 currently in the four-year-old pre-K that will move up. We have 14 in our portal, the registration portal. We know we're getting six Mashpee residents who would be entering kindergarten from Kids Club. And so that brings us to 89, where it's, we're projecting anywhere from 12 to 15 kids that register over the summer for kindergarten. But pre-K is, we sent all the letters out based on, based on the census, but it's, I don't know, that one's a little harder to project.
I'm still looking for the pandemic influx, so.
I'll let you know. I keep you posted.
Yes, what year would they hit the preschool age? Next year?
Next year, yeah, next year.
I know that you're not feeling well, but I just want to say how grateful, I mean, you know, you all being gracious hosts for the multicultural game night. I talked to a lot of families that were there and many of them, it was the first event that they've ever gone to at the school. And I spoke with one Portuguese-speaking family who said, you know, we felt as though we were the only Brazilian family in the school and it was lovely to be able to connect with other families. So the importance of it and, and the PTO's work to, you know, support putting it together was just fabulous. And the last thing I'll share about it is just this realization where we all looked at the clock and recognized that the event had ended 45 minutes ago. Poor Mr. Pran was walking around pretty much with like a broom trying to like. But folks really, really enjoyed it. And I really hope that we can continue to integrate these type of events into our, our community and our district because they were incredibly meaningful.
Thank you. I, and I agree. And I remember looking at the clock and seeing the same thing. It was, people were totally engaged and the adults were enjoying each other's company as well. And it's like, it's okay to let this go. Like it, it was just a nice feeling and a nice place to be. So we were happy to be able to partner with PTO and so happy to have that engagement with our families.
We noticed at our LPAC meetings that we've started this year too, the same thing where it's over and we're, oh yeah, Andrew, you're, that's right. And we're all just like chatting and it's, that is not something that we see a ton of. And so that, just, I'm sorry to interject, but what you said really resonated with me of that experience this year with our, our LPAC families as well.
It was very cultural where I was like, yeah, it's like a family party. And we're all like, oh gosh, we should all be moving along now. Poor DPW friends are just trying to go home for that. So thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much. And feel better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Andrew, just think with your Math Buddy, that'll make your Walk of Honor that much more.
They're going to worship you.
Little friends.
I know him.
Which of the principals would like to go next? I'll let you guys decide.
Oh, it looks like Mrs. McSweeney's that.
Looks like Mrs. McSweeney?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity. It's always a check off things after Andrew and Superintendent DeBoer. Cover it, cover it, cover it. The high school remains equally busy, especially so as we enter into the spring. I don't think there's a day on the calendar that there's not something or many things. The 20th anniversary of the Teacher-Student Art Exhibit, which takes place at the Cape Cod Museum of Arts, will take place between March 21st and May 12th. We do have students from our school that are involved with that. And this year's theme is Through Young Eyes. So congratulations to our art students who will be participating in that. And the community is welcome to attend that exhibit at any time. Spring athletic season began Monday, as I'm sure Mr. Trevery will share with you. Our student athletes will competing, will be competing in track, softball, tennis, lacrosse, and baseball. So if you drive up to the school, you will see much activity around our school community. They will be bundled up tomorrow for sure. I think that's always tricky as we go from the winter to the spring season. Some days you're in shorts and t-shirts, other days you have your parka on and mittens and it's an interesting time for sure. This week, our sophomores and junior students participated in the College and Career Fair Day, never too early to get our young learners in the thought process of where do I want to go post-high school, whether that be the college route or a route in which they have planned in a career. So that took place this week. We remind our families that every Saturday morning, Superintendent DeBoer had mentioned that the Building Club has been putting together a great daily piece. They also are sending something out to our families every Saturday, which culminates what's been going on during the week and informs them of what may be happening in the upcoming week. This Friday, we will have Anna Juan Reedin come and do presentations. He will do two presentations during the day entitled First Light Flashback. It's about an hour presentation and all of our students will, will be fortunate enough to see that. to see that. Scheduling for the 2024-2025 school year remains on track. As we, I have shared previously, we're looking to get schedules out to our students and their families in May so that the students are aware of what their academic load will be for the upcoming school year. And likewise, teachers will know what their academic schedule is for the upcoming school year to best prepare, to give the best education. That will begin day one of the school year and hopefully make our new principal's transition a bit smoother as she comes on board. So we're, we're, we're on go for that. Two of the big goals that we have for the scheduling process is keeping our C P level courses at 16 and equating teacher loads for our, for our faculty. Believe it or not, the third term ends April 3rd. Report cards will be distributed or be ready on the 10th of April. We are entering M-CAS and A P testing periods. The E L A long-term, um, um, long-term essay is on March 26th and 27th. We know our students are prepared, they've received a great education. Sometimes it's helpful to remind them to get a good night's sleep and have a, have a good meal on the morning of their testing. So those, those upcoming dates are the 26th and 27th for our 10th graders. The class of 2024, as Andrew will tell you, now that we enter the fourth term, is, is heading down the homestretch. And though we take great care to make sure that our, that our students are on track to graduate, sometimes my experience as a principal has taught me that as the sun comes out and the weather gets warmer and the number of days left appear, we just want to make sure that we'll continue to make great choices so that the cake that's been ordered and the invitations printed and the party hall reserved, we make sure that we're all there to celebrate the occasion of, of graduation. As was mentioned earlier, the spring concert is coming up, the play is coming up. You'll be happy to hear, Mr. Myers, that we've reconfigured, reconfigured the lunchroom. So there's a much better, if you will, flow as students, students go in, they've done a lot of rearranging, we've purchased some, some new equipment in, in the, in the flow. We're getting good feedback on it. I know, Andrew, if you want to speak to that.
Yes, I would, but I also have something else I'd like to add to that.
Sure.
So I think now I've seen a lot less lines for lunch. The, the, everyone's going through very effectively and efficiently and flowing through. It's just a lot better, the layout's better. But I'd also like to plug, this is just my own shameless little plug, the Environmental Club is also starting during second lunches composting. So if there are any food items that you do not eat, that you sum up, don't throw them away, put them in the compost, please. We've hoarded all the trash cans together, just put it in the bucket.
Two more quick items. We are, the We Are Mashpee store is now open on Wednesdays and Thursdays from 3:00 to 6:00. Again, an opportunity for the communities to come and see some of the great swag that is always changing in that store. Every time I go by, there's something different that's in there and our students enjoy creating that. A public service announcement of somewhat, again, as we enter the spring, many of our juniors all of a sudden getting their license. So we're entering into that parking. The seniors, I'm saying that nice and loud, Andrew, the seniors have permission to park at school, as does faculty and staff. Will be, we've begun the, the piece of communicating with juniors that, sorry to say, there's, there's got to be a little waiting time until, until our seniors graduate and parking spaces become available. Parking is tight, as we know, at Mashpee Middle High School, so we're in communication with them at this time and I guess just publicly making you aware, juniors, you gotta, it's part of the pecking order, but soon, soon parking will open up. Other than that, life as well at Mashpee Middle High School and I, I thank you for this opportunity to share some of the great happenings that are going on within our school walls.
Thank you very much. Mr. Switzer, you're up again.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I think the first thing I'll highlight is Steam Night. We had Steam Night on April, or February 29th, I'm already thinking ahead, February 29th. It is advert, it is as advertised, it's my first time, but it's supposed to be our biggest event of the year here at Quashen and it was. My estimation, I was keeping a count in my head, was we had about 200 families representative, represented. Our STEM teacher, Jamie Whitten, does a fantastic job. She coordinated probably about 30 stations that included rockets, marshmallow shooters, fraction battleship. It was just fantastic, tons of people attended. I know Mary Kay was talking about their event and I would echo the same thing, families were engaged. We had all different families, families who hadn't come before. I had a parent come up to me and said, my kid kept begging me to come when he got off the bus and here we are and I'm glad we came. So I think that was awesome. We have a ton coming up, just like the high school. Kathy highlighted how everything on the calendar is full and then when you talk from a district level, it's like, good luck scheduling an event at this point. But just to highlight some things that are coming up, on April 1st, we have our second No Place For Hate activity that I'm really looking forward to. We're going to do identity icebergs with all the students and if you're not familiar with identity icebergs, you identify things about your identity that are above the waterline, things you could see, things at the waterline that you might know if you're my friend, if you talked to me for a few minutes, you'd learn, and things deeper down that your family would learn. And then what's a really cool feature that we're going to do is they are gonna, the classes are going to meet with students of other grade levels, so our sixth graders in a team with our third grade and our fifth and our fourth grade, they're going to share with each other, have some conversations, build that community connection, and then they're going to write letters back to each other about accepting differences and how they appreciated what they learned about each other. Our teachers are paired up, they're going to have meeting times that they compare students together. We have paired together our E L classes and put the icebergs in Portuguese. Big shout out to my admin assistant, Kate Mildy, for doing the translation and then asking some of the sixth grade students, is this make, is this, is this the right thing? Do the, is the English and the Portuguese match? So I thought that was just like a really cool feature and those are the stuff that comes out organically when I, I have to admit, when I matched the classes up, I wasn't thinking about that, but you know, our E L teacher reached out, thought that'd be a really cool thing. So just the things that have come out of the No Place For Hate program that our staff are thinking about is just, you know, you, you can't do it with one brain and I just really appreciate that kind of feedback and it's going to just make it that much better for our kids. April 2nd and 3rd is E L A M-CAS. My plea to parents is just encourage your kids, do the best they can, that's all we can ask, and please get a good night's sleep before. Other than that, you know, our teachers and our students have done fantastic work this year. I'm excited for them to take the tests and for us to, you know, see some, hopefully some positive results. I'm sure they'll do great. April 4th is Night to Shine, another big event that we have, so mark that down in your calendars. It's really a big talent show that's really focused on the written word and the sung word that's put on by our Title One and our Reading Department. I have heard legends of a certain now fourth grade student who does amazing car noises and I'm really looking to seeing that. We have some kids who do some comedy, so that's going to be a really cool event. I heard it's great student council, again, just another organic thing came to me, hey, can we raise some money? Can we sell popcorn and water? Absolutely, it's going to be awesome. We'll put that in the student activities count and now the student council can use that towards field day, whatever they want. And then the last thing I will have that's coming up on April 8th is, as all of us know, is a solar eclipse. We have ordered glasses for every student, every staff member. We are going to go out as a school onto the field and view the eclipse. We were also, Desi is out ahead of this because they sent safety precaution guidelines recently, so we are going to be all set on the safety. We have the glasses. I was shocked, they, we got 500 glasses, it came in like a box this big, I couldn't believe because they're, they're thin and cardboard, but that's going to be a really cool thing. Again, I had a fifth grade teacher reach out to me about it a couple of months ago and a sixth grade teacher and I just said like, we should just do it as a whole school and I think people, you know, the staff is really excited about that. So that's just to highlight some things coming up in April. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a comment. I will say there was a waiting list to volunteer for Steam Night and I did not make it.
I didn't know that, I would have moved you up on the list, Andrew.
But he got on the list for L P A C babysitting, so I'm just saying. And we have pizza there, so.
Nice.
I will say the eclipse, the last one, we were on a vacation and we were in a spot that was 99% total and it is a very cool thing to witness. So, but I'm with you when our glasses came and they came in like a little envelope because we only ordered three, but they're like the little 3D glasses, which was kind of like, this is going to protect our eyes. But we stopped at some truck stop somewhere in Tennessee and like total middle of nowhere, but we were sharing our glasses with all the other people who had stopped. It was really neat.
Yeah, it's awesome. I look, I mean, we're not in the 100% band, but it's not too far north of us. I'm pretty sure it's in New Hampshire and someone here might know better than me. But it's going to be a, you know?
Well, no, I, I remember seeing the map. I believe it's 93% in, in the swath that goes over us and I believe it's also around the dismissal time of basically most of the schools.
But I read it goes from 2:30 to 4:30. So I mean, we won't go out for the whole two hours, but I mean, you know, when we come back in, I guess we're going to have to have the lights on. Right, it's going to be dark, you know? I, I, I don't know as much about eclipses, I'm sure some people.
It's cool. It'll, it'll be cool.
I remember seeing the last one, I, I do, but it's going to be great to just bring all the kids out, have them all have that opportunity and they can take the glasses home, too. So, yeah, when they get in the car for dismissal, they can hand them to their parents and they can try them out, too.
And I believe Ms. Loeb's, didn't we order the glasses for the middle high school and the Coombs School has already taken care of theirs as well, so everyone will receive the safety glasses to view the eclipse, staff and students.
All right, thank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Trevery, you waited so patiently.
Thank you.
Yes, next up is Mr. Trevery, Athletic Director.
Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. I, I know Kathy McSweeney talked a little bit about we're beginning spring sports, ending the winter, we have a two-week break in between. So we have started spring sports. I've been here for 11 years, the best job I think that we've seen. The Department of Public Works put a ton of machinery, a ton of people into getting the fields ready. They look as good as I've ever seen it. I mean, obviously that helps, it was a fairly mild winter, but their efforts were terrific and our coaches rave about the fields right now, the condition they're in. The turf field's a turf field, but the grass field's good and the diamonds take a lot of work. They look outstanding. We play in the week, we will be way ahead of a lot of other people in terms of where our field use, field is, are and ready to play. Registration numbers for us in the spring are about identical for athletics between middle school and high school as they were in 2023. We have, we're pretty well stocked in most high school sports. Boys lacrosse could use a couple of kids, boys tennis could use a couple of kids. They certainly could use the numbers as softball, but we do see pretty good numbers in other sports. Girls, girls lacrosse has big numbers, girls tennis among the other ones. Registration process is over, there's going to be people that trickle in that didn't register, particularly the middle school level. We tend to open it up here and there. We have a second opening for registrations. It's a long, kind of arduous process to get kids registered, they have to go through the registration process, physical has to be valid, we have to have baseline testing for every kid, we have to take, make sure the materials aren't out, and then there's verification process on, on, with the nurse, between the nurse and our assistant Athletic Director and Athletic Trainer, Nicolette Branson, who does a phenomenal job with this stuff. It is very tedious, it's a lot of work and she's the point person on that and really does an outstanding job communicating with people. Our coaches made sure that they emailed home, we just tried to get everybody on board so we have a great start to the season and it's been a good start. The weather is, the weather on Cape Cod, there's no spring, so I just, we would just have to make sure you have the coats until June because they will not be warm in the next couple of months. We do have two new varsity coaches, head coaches this year, one new middle school head coach. Just so briefly go over our new head coaches. Girls lacrosse, Samantha Zeal is the new head coach for girls lacrosse program. She comes to us most recently from Cape Cod Academy where she was the head coach there. She's also been a head lacrosse coach at Born High School, has over 20-plus years of girls lacrosse coaching experience. She's also a member of the U 18 National Selection Committee. She's a certified official. She also works at Born Middle School as a physical education teacher where she's been for quite some time as well, for 20-plus years. Una Williams, her assistant, who also works in the building at M M H S and is not a more positive person, she'll be a great J V coach with a lot of new kids. Really excited to have both of them aboard. I think the program is, is in really good hands. Our boys tennis coach, our new boys tennis coach, David Sugar, who runs the U S T A Parks and the Pro, Parks and Tennis in the Parks Program, which is, goes hand-in-hand with the U S T A. They get money, they get rackets to help teach kids how to play tennis that usually communities that, that you don't see tennis a lot in. He's spread himself through the upper Cape into Barnstable. He really works with youth kids, he also works on the base, he started a tennis program on the base. He is, he's retired, he gives private lessons. There's a lot of work down in Falmouth that the, what's the name of that place?
The Sports Center?
Yes, yeah, he's there quite a bit, does one-on-one lessons, really, really, really solid guy with fundamentals of tennis and knows the game, loves teaching the game. He's retired now, but, but he does still work. He does the V I P Financial Literacy Program over at Falmouth High School. He works with the Falmouth Public Schools on financial literacy, which, which is certainly something, yeah, every, having a 16-year-old that every kid, 16, 17, 18-year-old certainly should know about. And it, his work, when he, he did work, he was the Vice President of Consulting Firm and he was the Vice President of Sales in the Stanley Company, which is a 17 billion dollar manufacturing company. Very, very well-respected and excited to have him on the boys tennis program. I know he's excited to grow the program and grow it down here at Quashen and Cooms and work with some of our local trainers that do a great job with our tennis kids. Our new middle school head coach is middle school baseball, Jason Merkmann, who's been a longtime coach and volunteer in football, baseball, and basketball at Mashpee Middle High School before he came to us as a paraprofessional. Currently, he works as a physical education teacher at Mashpee Middle High School. He has long-time coaching experience in baseball and he's also was a longtime Little League coach as well. So we're excited to have all, all coaches aboard. He's going to be assisted by Kurt Morris, who we're, who has not been in the baseball program a long time, but was probably in the baseball program when I started here, maybe 19 years ago. So it's, it's kind of a, kind of a rebirth for, for Coach Morris. He has a, a large baseball background as a player and as a coach, too. So our, our younger kids can't, can't ask for better people to be around. Couple notes just from us. We are running the Falcon Festival this year, which is a baseball softball event. It's tailored down because it, we have to run it, we usually run it the second week of the spring sports start, which leads us into Easter, so there'll be nothing on Sunday on Easter. Softball will go Friday and Saturday and then baseball's all day Saturday. So there's kind of a tailored down number of teams, six teams in softball, seven teams in baseball. It's a large event with varied schools. We have a couple of schools coming from New Hampshire and it's a very different world. The kids dry themselves down, which is wild to me, but it's very different. Great, great people, Summers, I'm sorry, Concord, New Hampshire's one of the schools. We have a couple of schools come, last year we had schools from New York and then we have a bunch of schools out of Central Mass this year and some on the Cape. So it's just a, it's a very busy day at, at the school, but it's a great day to just see all the people there and it is, you see some really good competition there as well. And finally, we're going to host the South Shore League Track Meet this year, which is a large, large event. It's on May 14th, 11 schools, boys and girls, hundreds of athletes. It is a long day, it's, it's probably going to start for us around 4:30 and probably get done around 9:30 or so. So it's about a five-hour event. We have a great facility, it's a great place to showcase our facility. Usually we're at Norwell or we're at Middleborough or somewhere of that nature. I think our facility can handle it and, and we're going to move everything off, off the premises that day and it's truly good to showcase our facilities at town in Mashpee and our, our staff, which does a great job with the track and field program. Any question?
I have a question. When I look at the gymnastic program, the co-op program that we have, it's like we are big influx of participants or seniors, so they'll be graduating and we don't have a lot. I think we have two right now that are currently in the program that will be coming back next year. How's that? Is our feeder system that the private programs here in Mashpee?
So we lost one senior that competed, one that did. We bring back three kids, other kids that did compete and we'll bring up at least two more kids that are going to compete. From, our coach runs the gym and it's a Mashpee gym at Flip Flops, so she has a pretty good gauge of kids coming up. She has at least two or three kids in every class all the way down to like grade five. That program we're really have a pretty good handle on because she's in charge of the gym, she knows what level those kids are as gymnast. So we, we have a pretty good foothold. Being co-op with Barnstable helps, obviously it's an 1800 kids school, high school. You know, our, our coach competed there, still friendly with the. You know, our, our coach competed there, still friendly with the coach there, coach there, coach hers. They have a great relationship and they've been highly, highly successful. So we, we think we have a pretty good hold on, and that program should sustain itself pretty well.
I think there might be, when I look at that sheet you're looking at, I think there might be an error because it shows that we had 12 seniors in gymnastics night and I went to that night and we did not have 12.
Andrew just asked me too. I was like, yeah, I think it's a tie.
And 12 and two do not add up to 18.
It should be one with two parentheses, one, one competing and one on the team. And I think some of that has to do with, with how it gets built as a co-op as well.
Okay, that, that makes a lot more sense.
No, no, wait.
Because I was looking at it like, wow, we have 12 and they're all graduating and now we're only gonna have.
No, that'll be a discussion for football next year. We graduated a large number and don't have any left. So that's gonna be a different discussion.
We're only playing A-Man next year.
Yes, somewhere in that era.
One last, one last question. So we've had the new turf field, a year now?
Year and a half, yeah.
Year and a half. Was it a good investment by the town from, from your perspective and from the kids' perspective?
I mean, the kids love it. It's, it's, it's a game changer for us. We, we had several years where by the end of the year, we had to take games for soccer at the end of the year and lacrosse at the end of the year and actually play at other people's facilities. So our kids are never gonna have to worry about that. The damage done to the field doesn't have to be repaired. So our fields, our grass fields actually are much better for it. We host more night activities. Our kids, you know, if they want, if coaches wanna go on that field, they, they go later in the evening. We don't have to worry about rainouts as much, play in the rain. The surface has been very good. It, it's, it's been a game changer for us. The other thing is we have a huddle camera in that stadium. So all the sports that play in the stadium get filmed. They can, we can broadcast every single game. So we broadcast every single game that's played in that stadium. So a lot of times aunts, uncles, grandparents, the such, friends, they can watch it anywhere in the country by just clicking on our huddle account and going on and watching. So there, there's been a, we couldn't do that obviously in the, in the grass fields because we don't have pole cameras. We do have one, but it's exceptionally hard to set up. Some of it's Wi-Fi based, so there's issues with that. So in, in some ways it's opened up a lot of things for us. I think it's improved the quality of the programs and certainly, like I say, for the kids and coaches, it's, it's God sent for them because they love playing on, they love being there and it's, it's a, you know, our opponents say the same thing too. Like this is great to be on turf.
No, that's great. My only disappointment was that we weren't able to do the, one of the practice fields when we did the turf. The huddle camera or program that you just talked about, does that cost money for participants, for people to watch?
It doesn't. It's free. Theoretically, we, we theoretically could charge. I know I've, I've talked to Ashley a little bit about that and I, I think we don't, we don't need the money per se, but there, there is a way you could monetize that by charging per game. We just haven't done that. We don't charge your sports, don't charge your buses. Personally, I didn't wanna get into that. I think Ashley, I think, I won't speak for her, but I think they have the same thoughts. But no, we, you could theoretically do that. There is actually a way to commercialize it too with ads and such, but that would take approval to, as well from, from the school.
No, I know other schools do charge. Disappointing particularly like during playoff games, you couldn't watch them, or couldn't watch Mashpee on away games. So do we, is that publicized somewhere that so that people would know?
Yep.
Where to go, where to go to watch them?
Yeah, our coaches talk to our kids about it sometimes in their, their letters home that they talk about that. They have meetings. We have a meet the coaches night with most of our sports on, all of our sports tomorrow with the exception of softball, which meets on Friday, which opens up a meeting for parents. I'll make sure the parents are aware that they're playing the stadium. It's also like on our Twitter accounts and pinned tweets whenever you go to our Twitter account or if you go to our athletics website, that's the first thing you see and just click on it and it leads you right there. So after registration's done, our pinned tweet's always the one for huddle so you can go on and just click on and watch games.
On the web, yeah, it's pretty predominant.
On the websites or the school websites?
On the athletics page and it's usually very predominant, like Anthony said, it's, it's there. You click on it and you don't really need to do much to get it to open. It's just a link.
And it, it has all the historical games too or is?
It has all the.
Historical.
Does it keep the historical games or is it only real time?
Good question. We, we don't keep the historical games for, for the simple reason that, that sometimes it's for scouting purposes and the such. Once we realize we're not going to tournament in certain sports, we'll open those up and we'll, we'll put those in a history page. Coaches have requested that, usually basketball coaches request that. Do I think you get a huge advantage by watching somebody's lacrosse game? No. And there, there's, but the kids have access to it and in essence the parents do too because all the kids have access to a huddle account. So they can all go on and watch every single game that they played in. Their parents could too. They could, the kids can just send their parents a link. So they, the parents would have access to general public. No, wouldn't.
They, they wouldn't be able to watch it?
They wouldn't be able to watch a game that was, was already completed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But they could real time. Okay, excellent.
Any questions, Dan?
Nope, thank you.
I just have one question. Don kind of touched on it, the feeder programs. Is there any thought from your department of, you know, coming to this school and starting intramural? I know there are some intramural clubs, but I also know that involves finding coaches or people who know enough about the games to foster that love of whatever sport. But is there any discussion on your, in your department of doing that to help build and continue to keep Mashpee Athletics at the level it's at?
Yeah, we, we've, we've definitely talked about that. We've done it already. Elijah's been a great supporter. Volleyball comes down here for a two-week period, three-week period. Lacrosse, both lacrosse's have been down here for a two to three-week period. They run a flag football program after school. Soccer really doesn't need it. They're huge.
Town, town does a really good job with soccer, Little League, so baseball, softball, soccer. It was more the other sports, I guess.
And I agree 100%. That, we, we, I, I know Superintendent Bor, I, right before COVID, met with, with Mary Bradbury and just kind of trying to plant seeds earlier, even earlier in the Washington School, just to get kids involved in sports that, that aren't soccer, baseball, basketball, to put a, a field hockey stick in a kid's hands, put a lacrosse stick in a kid's hands. Field, well, field hockey has been down here too. So they do those two-week programs and the coaches know that's how they, they're gonna have to survive unfortunately, that you have to go get kids involved. Our, our numbers, participation numbers aren't certainly where we want them to be. We're in the 30s, 40s, sometimes even lower in the winter, like 29, 30. We'd love to be at 60%, but it's also diverse school. We have kids, we have kids, a ton of kids that follow the music and draw everything under the sun. So there, there's a lot of that too. But we are definitely in Washington right now. I, I'd like to even go a little bit younger in, in the Cooms because I think that's where you start there and plant the seed and then the kids come up here and they kind of get used to a certain path, pathway to, before they get to us. And it's a great question because we get, about 50% of our kids at elementary middle school have never played that sport before. So our, our coaches do a great job once they get in. It's just, we would love to have, you know, we love to have a stick, a rack in their hand and tennis does a pretty good job outside of the schools with people that train, Catherine trains. But no, that we would like to even go further and kind of go in the Cooms.
Maybe that's an opportunity for another buddies group for, you know, the, the high school kids. You know, if you're doing it with math and, you know, maybe there's a sports buddies that you could tap into because the kids really respond to the other kids and, and I don't know liability-wise, what that looks like, but gonna throw that idea out on, out on the floor and I don't know. I mean, it could be something they work into their recess buddy program even, you know?
Well, even the cheerleaders did.
I was gonna say the cheerleaders have done it.
Cheerleaders, they brought the little kids.
They perform at the halftime of football and basketball.
I bet you a bunch of those kids will end up being cheerleaders, you know?
That whole exposure, like you said, the sooner you're exposed to something and you don't even know a sport's a sport, how are you gonna know you wanna play it or even try to play it? So I mean, I, I think it's important to, to get that exposure. So I'm happy to hear that that is something that is.
Yeah, we're doing it now, but like you said, the surrounding towns, most of the surrounding towns do have better opportunities in like grades one, two and three and it's tough, people to go into Barnstable or go into Falmouth. I mean, it just would be easier here. So, agreed.
Two questions. Any plans for a pickleball feeder program?
No plans for pickleball, not an M.I.A. sport yet, but it dominates, dominates every town.
I know we've had challenges in regard to the late buses. Has that had an impact on the sports programs? Good question.
So the late buses, late buses don't really affect us as much, but the buses in general is something I work with Ashley with. And getting drivers for sports trips is an enormous challenge. I just went over today with Collaborative. We have eight dates not covered right now. Lucchini is a secondary provider for us. They, they take care of all of our middle school stuff. They've been outstanding. We do, sometimes we'll have four trips, maybe in the fall, three, four, three trips in the spring that we have to piece together. So we have to move vans around. Other times we'll have to play late. We'll have to go to an opponent like six or seven o'clock. We'll have to wait for the routes to get done and have a route driver cover an athletic event. It, it has changed a lot over the last three or four years. We never really had to deal with this as much, but you just don't have, it's not the buses. We have the buses. It's the drivers that comes on just having dedicated sports trip drivers.
Other towns having the same issue?
What's that?
Are other towns having the same issue?
Yeah, pretty much every town has the same issue. I, I think I mentioned someone today. Mondemoy's, their kids drive to games now, or their parents can't drive them. They just don't have buses, same company, same issues. I know we've talked about, we, we just don't want our kids driving to games. That, that's not a policy we wanna start here. But, but those issues create those, those sort of problems on their own.
And that is something that MASC, like our division for MASC, we've been talking about with the school committees because we are hearing that from multiple Cape schools. It's, it's an issue. It seems to be for all of us in Division Seven for MASC. So yeah, whatever we can do to help. But it seems like it's not necessarily within any of our ability. It's more people need to wanna be a bus driver.
Well, I know when I was on the Collaborative, they had increased wages for paying bus drivers. It sounds like that had a limited impact and that maybe we'll have to look at that again. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt. And you have Consolino Carroll's report in your packet. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Gonna make my monthly plug. We're at 401 followers. We need 599 on that YouTube channel. So like and subscribe, people, like and subscribe.
Which, so Andrew, a question for you. I don't know why we have 630 kids at the middle high school. Why can we not get them to subscribe? We've pushed and.
Well, YouTube doesn't really work on the Chromebook.
Yeah, there's some blocks.
There's blocks for.
But the, they, so they can't even join through a Chromebook to follow it?
Not under the Mashpee.
And not under the Mashpee account? Okay.
And you don't want them to have any other accounts on their Chromebooks? No, that's why.
That's right. Well, that answers that.
But they have phones.
That's true. They could do it during homeroom.
Just saying, there are ways.
All right, next up, oh, sorry.
We are a Mashpee store. Is there any plans to try to get back to the Commons?
Not at this time. We are working on our mini-bus conversion.
How's that going?
I think it needed some work and then we're working with Cape Tech to do the inside and then we're looking at one of those kind of shrimp wrap envelopes for the outside once we design it.
What's, does the plan to park that somewhere during the summer?
I mean, it'll most likely be housed at the high school, but it's meant to go to different events as the out, a part with the outreach mobile essentially, where it'd be like for the Fourth of July picnic here, which I think is in June this year, we could have that, that bus set up for people to come in and out of. We could take it to Southport Cup. Like we can bring it to different locations. It's not meant to be fixed anywhere. It will, it's registered and it's inspected. It can be on the road. So it's really to be an extension of Mashpee Public Schools in our community.
And just having said in on a couple of Chamber of Commerce meetings, I believe there, I don't know if it's a fresh farmer's market, but there is something planned that will take place every Sunday on the green across from the library for a block of time. I think it's four or five hours. It will have crafters. It will have, and that would be a perfect place for our bus to be on Sundays.
I also had asked, and I don't know if you had a chance to follow up with Consuelo, but about having a partnership with a store in the Commons. You know, some will offer like, not necessarily consignment, but they'll give a designated.
Section.
Section of their store for the merchandise. Is, is that, do you know?
We did have the conversation and I'm not sure, I'm not recalling how we landed. I think part of it is our store contains a lot of student-produced items, not just clothing, but items. Finding a partner in the Commons for selling those items, you know, maybe a nice ice cream shop or.
Well, I'm just thinking, because the bus is a great idea, yes, but I think also having that permanent place is honestly a little bit better, in my opinion, but I also understand the logistics of that is a little more complicated. But I guess if we could find partners in the community who were willing to have like a little mini Mashpee section in their store could help. But again, if there's logistical, there's probably logistical issues.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure, but there are things we could work through. So we'll continue to explore that. Ideally, a, a site would be lovely at the Commons, but I fear that may not happen again. Next is the recently completed MPS Family Opinion Survey. We do go over this in detail in the summer, but I do have some data and you have a packet. You have a handout. It looks like this is the front of it, although it might have other things in it. Anyway, just to do a quick overview, you see at the top of that first chart shows the rate of return for, on a family basis for each of the schools. You can see four years of data there and then the response rate by school in terms of students because there is an identifier included and so parents would have to fill it out for each of their students that attend the school. And then the last column in the yellow shows the student participation rate. I will say this year's administration of the student survey was very well done. They were specific, I think it was March 7th for fifth grade, March 8th for sixth grade and the principal was involved. And you can see we have a 90% participation rate, seventh and eighth grade and nine through 12. They all took it on March 13th. Also, two different times of the day. The schedule was built specifically so it wasn't inter, all the classes were shortened. You can see we have much better return rates there as well. I think our, so we can see other days, so there's, that's four years worth of similar data. The next one just shows the overall for the Family Opinion Survey, the participation rate, which is 29% this year. It is down, but I know that 29% is still considered good, but obviously it's declining. The next sheet shows the response to the survey by grade. And so you have four years worth there and just to highlight each year, this year it was the families of sixth graders who were, had the highest response rate at the 9.8%. I don't know if this, that has any meaning of this data. It's just an observation. The next sheet shows the Student Opinion Survey. This is the third year that we've done that. And you can see by the, the graph, the percentage of participation rate for each of the years. So you can see that for this year, green, we've had a better percentage rate with our students. And just a, a quick synopsis of, I'm just gonna read it out there for TV land. We had a total of 179 fifth and sixth graders respond to the survey and 534 Mashpee Middle High School seventh through 12th graders respond. So that's really valuable information for us to start to learn from. And then the next chart is a couple of our legacy questions. So I think the Mashpee Public Schools has a positive public image. The blue line is the Parents Guardians and you can see for this year it's at a 93%. That is up from last year's 85. I understand the role of the Mash- I understand the role of the Mashpee School Committee for Parent Guardians. It went from seventy-two up to eighty-nine percent. And then the bottom two bars show the test, the impact, not impact, the input from students. So the positive public image of the Mashpee Public Schools has gone up to seventy-eight percent. That's the blue, purple line from what looks to be like forty-eight, I think, last year. And then I understand the role of the School Committee has also gone up to seventy-five percent. And that was forty-nine percent last year. And then the only, actually two more slides, but the next one is just focused on that one question. The Mashpee Public Schools has a climate where diversity is honored, equity is provided, and inclusion is insured. And you see the first three sections of bars are the Parent Guardians input. And then the last two sections are the students. And so that you can see Coombs' parents, it has, it is at ninety-five percent, believe. And these are respondents who said strongly agree or agree, agree. Yes, I have that over there on the column. Ninety-five percent of Quasnet parents, eighty-nine of responding parents, guardians, eighty-nine percent of the MMHS parent guardians. And then you see the Quasnet fifth and sixth graders and the Mashpee Middle High School students who responded. That actually is the same eighty-five percent of students selected strongly agree or agree to that prompt. The last slide you have is just a cleaned up version. It's double sided of the questions that were in this year's survey. I will say that the, I met with this, well, we met with the student, my student Advisory Council, which is seventh through twelfth graders. And we took, this is their version of the questions, the individual questions in the aggregate, which is the only thing we share. And they, we went through it as a starting point and they decided that anything that was seventy-five percent or above as agree or strongly agree, they felt was in a good place and that we would dig deeper into anything that was below that. So we have several that we've starred, that we will start to do a little bit of looking. We have the similar chart for the Quasnet School and that has been shared with the principal and their school-based leadership team. We will be doing that for the other three Parent Guardian surveys by question as well, just...
Can I just ask, would it be possible to also provide us, I guess seventy-five percent, like, yes, that's okay. But I guess I would like us to look at eighty percent. I don't know if that's feasible, just because I know it's only five percentage points, but I feel like seventy-five percent. I don't know, I'm targeting back to my hotel satisfaction surveys where anything below an eighty-five was unacceptable. But I guess I'm just, I, I, I guess I just feel seventy-five percent is still a pretty big jump to get to eighty. And I wonder if there's something in those seventy-five to seventy-nine percent that could provide insight, I guess, is how I'm looking at it. But I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts on that. I just, seventy-five percent just seemed a little...
Well, I, I think you have to take it in, take it in context because, you know, I would be looking, so for example, what the data that you just provided us. You know, the diversity and equity and inclusion has gone up significantly.
Yes.
Right? Just period over period, well, that's the highest for the three years we have, I guess, asked that question. And so obviously the question is, we didn't apparently something right, but what's that?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I guess I'm just saying, you know, if we could get everything to eighty and above, and I guess I'm looking at, yes, historically we've gone up and that's fantastic. And I'm very happy with some of these numbers. And I can't wait, and this is exactly, and I can't wait to...
Oh, no, it's just the one question.
Yeah, I think I'm just thinking, going forward, how do we continue to raise that? Is there any insight in the answers that were below that number that could help us move forward? I guess is how I'm looking at it, but...
Well, so when, go ahead.
Seeing the response or the aggregate for the question.
So the, so the easiest way when you get this, like you'll remember from last year is we actually fill this part in. So it gives you one quick, you don't have to look at the pie charts.
I wouldn't mind the pie charts, I'll be honest. I like the pie charts.
We will give you all the pie charts that you would like.
I like pie charts.
For example, though, like when the, the question which we sort of split up this year, I feel, this is middle high school. I feel emotionally safe at my school. So we have seventy-four point seven who said strongly agree and agree. When they answered, I feel physically safe at my school, that was eighty-eight percent. So that there are, and I'm glad we separated that because before we just used to say safe, because they are very different. So there, there's just a lot in here. And then when I look, and I am the only one who looks at the individual student answers or family answers, you know, you look across the board. And unless there, there's a piece in the narrative or why don't I eat school lunch or why don't I like the buses? Those were two of the big areas and then the narrative. If someone's pretty consistently disagreeing or strongly disagreeing with everything, I would like to have a conversation because they, they didn't give enough for me to problem solve around that. But it, we, I'm very grateful that we have this information to use to inform us.
And if we have a data person someday, they can help you even more.
Yes, yes. Well, I had many other things to do, but once you get going on this, you just don't stop yourself, like, okay, I'm going to do this. You know, like I have a million other things to do, but we will get, continue to get you more information to update that. And I do thank everyone who participated, just to let everyone know, we, we did have an incentive this year for participation. And it did put it in our Friday communication. But the two Parent Guardians that were selected for a hundred dollar Amazon gift card, which is the courtesy of the P, of the boosters. I almost said P T O, it's the boosters. Dominique and Thomas Fugere were chosen and Ronnie and Joshua Moser were chosen. And then for the student world, two students were selected to receive a fifty dollar Amazon card. And that was Evan Dudley in grade five and Brendan Andre in grade ten. So we have them, we just have to get them to the recipients.
So we'll be getting a more in-depth look at it.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, this was just your initial swipe through, yes. You have in your packet the tribal partnership. We did have a meeting on the fifth and you can see, we have a list of who our Native American graduates are and they are all on target to graduate. There's a grand opening of the Quasnet School Courtyard Exhibit, I believe has been set for May. It's in the, I don't know if I attached the minutes, I should have. They're linked in here, but we can make sure you get the hard copy of the minutes. We have a tribal boys program running here after school with Darius Coombs. And we have a Daughters of Tradition new program running, which is with Talia Landry and Janelle Carey, who is actually a special education, Native American special education teacher at this school and a Mashpee graduate. We talked about the, or the tribe had asked about school choice seats for next year and this year. And we have some information there and they know that school choice seats for next year were being looked at tonight. We talked about Native American lunch bunches and their tribal school is remaining open through the end of the school year where there had been some concerns.
Question on the school choice, are those preference?
No. No. The only preference is if you have a sibling who's already enrolled in Mashpee in a school choice seat. And then just quickly, I do want to read a quick email recognition. This came to me on March tenth and it was from Douglas Tierney. Good Sunday afternoon, Superintendent DeBoer, I'm Doug Tierney, the First Vice President of the Otis Civilian Advisory Council, along with our President Kathy Johnson. We are regular attendees to the monthly joint operation jog meeting, which I think I went to virtually recently, held remotely for non-military organizations. It was nice to have you join the meeting, so I did go. Normally the public portion of the meeting lasts seven thirty to eight. I write on behalf of the Otis Civilian Advisory Council to say how grateful we are for the wonderful and timely service the Mashpee Key Club volunteers provided us during our Military Awards Dinner held on January twenty-eighth at the Navigator Club in East Falmouth. Our organization hosted this event when another group dropped the ball. O C A C was challenged to meet a quick fourteen day turnaround for the awards dinner. Desperately seeking volunteers, we reached out to Mrs. Riley and the Mashpee Key Club. They answered our call and much more. With over one hundred military and civilians in attendance, the evening was a huge success. Three Key Club members worked side by side with Mrs. Riley to remove dinnerware from tables to the kitchen to be washed. The Mashpee High School ambassadors were polite, respectful, efficient, and a joy to be with. Numerous attendees applauded their work. In appreciation, the Otis Civilian Advisory Council mailed a check to Mrs. Riley earlier this month. As a retired school principal for nineteen years from Deerfield, Mass., I was so proud of these young adults. The success of our awards dinner had many players, the Mashpee Key Club's efforts were an integral component. I hope this letter brightens your day. So I hope it brightens your day too. That concludes my section of that part.
You did skip one thing and I'm just going to mention it. Graduation is June first, ten a.m. at Mashpee Middle High School?
Yes, Mashpee Middle High School Gymnasium.
I guess I should answer that question.
Which is, I mean, June first is early and so lucky you.
Question, individuals or families who may live on the base, do those all go to Born or is...
They go, they go to Born unless they choose and choice to Mashpee. They could choice. It's all Born.
It's all Born.
Yes.
Any other questions for Superintendent DeBoer? Director Lopes, you are...
In your packet are the FY twenty-four budget reports. There is nothing significant to note in the reports for this month. I just want to put on your radar that I will be having budget transfers at the April meeting. So those will be coming, you'll see them in your packet. I didn't receive any questions before the meeting, are there any? No? The next part is Shareout for Finance Working Group.
So we met February twenty-eighth. Great, I mean, it was just kind of to review what we had discussed in terms of what we voted on at the Zoom meeting. So I don't know that there's much more to share out on that because we already voted and it's already been enacted, I believe, so.
That leads into the next documents in the packet. That's the FY twenty-five budget with the modifications that we made at the last meeting and the vote that you had at the last meeting. And my final update is about the H RAC project. The Slough Port has approved Performance Plumbing and Heating for the contract with the K C C H RAC upgrade. It came in at one point five million dollars, it was a little bit higher than what we expected. But one million fifty thousand is coming from S R three. And the rest of that contract will be coming out of the school choice funds. I'm currently in the process of getting a P O put together and getting Dussey approval for that. We also, at that same Slough Port meeting, had the O P M approved and that will be Answer. They are going to be kind of managing the two projects with us going forward. The first step is going to be getting a design and engineer on board, so we'll be going up to bid for that. And they're really going to be our liaison to make sure that we know what we're getting ourselves into. They can explain things if we don't understand it. And that contract will be getting paid out of school choice. That is the money that's already been allocated for this project. We're not dipping into any funds that are being allocated to the budget.
And just for those in, who are watching, O P M stands for Owner's Project Manager. And they're kind of like the ones who keep everything moving, so, as you explained, so.
And as the project progresses, I will be updating you. We had a kickoff call with Performance Plumbing and they have all their paperwork turned in. So we are scheduling a date for them to come on site and for them to have a thorough walkthrough at K C C. Any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question, so the work will begin in June or sooner? So will it be taking place during school?
That's what we're going to talk about at that, that walkthrough, to see what they can do while students are still...
We put this to vote when we have...
On the August third meeting.
The, the April third.
Sorry, yes.
I knew it started with an A, I was close, it was an A.
It was. I'm wondering if we have their input as well on this. I mean, I know it's kind of hard for everybody to know where you're going to be, but at least at first glance, you can be like, no, my family is always doing this on it.
But I mean, I also don't, we don't know if all those people are going to be doing it again too, so. Because everyone's up for election, I'm pretty sure. So I think the term is just one year.
We should probably look into that and make sure. Okay, good point, but it would still be nice out there.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll defer that. Next, we are looking at the school choice recommendations that were submitted by the administration for the...
So you have a handout.
Yep, go ahead.
Looks like this. Okay, so what you're seeing on there is the results of the district leadership teamwork. There's a lot of extra information on here, but I know sometimes, Mr. Myers, you like a lot of information, so we have some on there for you. You're going to be looking at the green column, which are proposed additional school choice program seats for school year twenty-four, twenty-five that the team is recommending, a total of fourteen seats. Those seats combined with what we currently, I'm sorry.
It was in the additional packet, that was like sideways, there it is right there.
It's okay. So you missed my additional data comment to you, that we included extra on here. Anyway, okay. Anyway, there is information for you to look at. We're directing you towards the green column where we are recommending fourteen additional seats be added. We have taken into account the twelfth graders who are graduating, who might have been the choice, which if you note down below, there were twelve students in that grade. Anyway, which, yeah, so we've shifted everybody, you know, down a year. And the total school choice would be twelve for, no, twelve, hundred and twenty with the addition of the fourteen seats for school year twenty-four, twenty-five and those who are currently enrolled in the school choice program for next year, which is the hundred and six. So as you recall, in looking at personnel this year, we have a goal of keeping our class sizes lower to be more focused on helping our students who are having social, emotional challenges. And so we were trying to target smaller elementary classes and seventh and eighth grade classes and our college prep classes to be smaller. So that has all been taken into account as we came up with our numbers. And so that is what we were recommending in the green column for school year twenty-four, twenty-five at this time.
And to clarify again for families who may be watching, once you school choice in and are accepted, you are in...
Till you graduate.
Till you graduate.
Yes.
Or choose to... Or choose to leave, whichever happens first.
Yes.
So these numbers would not impact those who are already in.
No.
This would be in addition to.
Right.
Just for clarification purposes to families who may not fully understand what school choice is. And the school choice enrollment program, oh, sorry, it's right there, you might have said it too, I'm sorry. So it's opening April first.
Yes.
And closing April third. Thoughts, comments from the committee? While Dawn's looking, I'm going to ask my question. We have at the bottom this note that as of March first, twenty twenty-four, this is the expressed interest. Have we had any come in since March first? No. So we currently have one eleventh grader who's expressed interest, but we're, you're recommending that we do not accept or open a school choice seat for eleventh grade.
That's correct. Also, you will note that we have had six inquiries into kindergarten and we are not having any seats there either. Because of the numbers, we only have five kindergarten teachers. And we're not looking to have, based on Principal O'Brien's recommendation, she's not looking to add choice to the, to that grade level.
Well, the class size projected are twenty kids per kindergarten, so I can kind of understand that rationalization. So that one I'm not, I guess I'm just looking at eleventh grader, they're down with that note of getting everybody. And I applaud this, this move to keep class sizes small. I do think it will provide a much better experience for our students and teachers. I guess I'm just wondering about adding that one eleventh grade seat if there is someone who has expressed interest, I guess is, and the same with third grade. But they're already at eighteen, so again, I don't know if anybody else has thoughts on that. Those are the two that I just am asking because we have had people express interest.
And that certainly wouldn't necessarily be the one to...
No, you have to be careful with that because they've inquired, we opened it... No, you have to be careful with that because they've inquired, we opened it up April first for the month of April.
Exactly.
There's no guarantees.
I understand there's no guarantees, and I think that, yes, that is a very important clarification. So thank you for mentioning that.
For the viewing public.
Again, thank you. Yeah, like, we, we do wanna try to, I think school choice is one of those things I feel is a little mystifying to some people. They don't totally understand the process or how it works. And I, I guess I'm trying to make sure we're educating a little bit so that people know we don't just make these numbers up to just be arbitrary. There is a very detailed process to determining the proposed seats. Andrew, Dawn, are you ready for any questions?
Yeah, so I guess my question relates to two grades, sixth grade and eleventh grade. It's a similar question. So when I look at the current student populations that are in sixth grade and eleventh grade, those are learning classes that are gonna be moving.
The current sixth grade at one twelve.
Right, so they'll be moving up.
Yes.
In theory, to seventh grade, and then that gets replaced by a small class at this point, really, very small class. The fifth grade is only eighty-six, right? So. That seems like that would, are we reducing a teacher in that?
Yes.
Yes.
A sixth grade teacher or a teaching position is being added to fifth grade.
So one's away from six, shift, because we've got a group, a bigger group coming in.
I think we could probably give you sort of the logistics of the thought process behind it in. Yeah, I think if that's what you're looking for, because we will definitely, this has been months of conversation with lots of visuals and sort of supports around it, that probably tonight won't be the night to be able to give you all those kinds of details.
Okay, yeah.
But a lot of thought has gone into. Yes.
Well, this represents the assumed moves, or the propose, or the potential moves, I should say. So these numbers are the potential moves here. Yes.
And if you look at the column there of planned number of teachers by grade level or by department, the third column over, fourth column, I guess, we currently have eight teachers by departments at the high school. So by reallocating, you know, to Quashnet and Quashnet reallocating to Coombs, we are not adding any new additional teachers, but we're trying to accomplish our goal of the smaller class sizes for seventh, eighth, C P and elementary. The goal.
My quick question for you, Andrew, as an eleventh grader, like, coming in as an eleventh grader, not that you did, but as you're, as you're experiencing as a student and anybody who might move into the district, because that's different than school choice, like, do you find, do you think that it would be unofficial to add that one eleventh grade seat? Or do you think it, I mean, I guess I'm just asking what, as a student, you think.
Like, how would the.
Yeah, like, do you think it would be easy for them to acclimate to the high school's culture and, you know, get what they need to get out of high school, I guess, as an eleventh grade school choice student?
I can't really speak for everyone, but in my experience, I think it would be pretty difficult because going into eleventh grade, I relied a lot on relationships between teachers, faculty members, just knowing a bunch of people around the building. So I relied on that a lot. I don't know how it would be moving to a new school and having to remake all those and prepare for college. And that's usually the year that some people start S A, not S A Gs, A P classes and stuff. So me personally, I would have a hard time doing that.
But I think the real question is, how many of our current school choice students are Mashpee students whose families moved?
That was my next question.
Most, most.
The only ones that wanted to stay, and if we can't, that's, those are the biggest issues.
So many, many had been Mashpee students at some point, living in Mashpee. Also, it's becoming more where teachers have choice their students in. They, the, the family lives in Catuitt, the family lives in Falmouth, the family lives in Plymouth, they've choiced in.
But I think historically, and this is why we are very sort of clearly do not accept students typically in eleven and twelve, is not those kids, because you can't guarantee it will be that kid who gets in. The other, the kids very frequently who come at that age level have come for a reason. It hasn't been successful somewhere else, and, and it's not as easy for us to help a kid be successful by the time they're in eleventh grade if they've not been with us all along. And it really does create a financial challenge and a sort of resources challenge, and it has historically, again and again and again. So when I say we, we've really shied away from that on, it's so that we can service the kids that we have in the best way that is possible.
I guess I could argue the opposite, though, like, especially if we know there's one interested. Are they not successful where they currently are in Wood Mashpee? You know what I mean?
But you don't get to ask.
I know you don't get to ask. But I guess in the back of my mind, it's like.
Oh, there's always that chance.
That question is like.
What I'm talking about is actual evidence of what we have experienced.
Okay.
And what I experienced in the, the district I came from before, which had more than, you know, two hundred and fifty kids through school choice, and we, and it was a smaller district than this. We did not open it after, actually, grade nine. I think tenth is appropriate, you know, but definitely not eleven and twelve.
I was talking to one of our teachers who's newer and from a previous district, and they tended to get a lot of school choice of high achieving students who were fleeing their more challenging districts. We are surrounded, I think, all of our schools on the Cape are good, so you don't see that. It's not really the reason.
I actually was going to ask, and I suppose I could look it up, too, but I wonder for the rest of the committee. I know Desi provides, or do we have data, I guess, on, could, could we see data on our school choice trend? Like, our, I know we get it in our, I know we get it here, but I guess I'm just looking if we could go even further back than this to kind of see, has Mashpee increased school choice in versus out?
Oh, yeah.
You know, like, I know we've got, we have a snapshot here, but could we go maybe a little further back? Just, just out of curiosity, because I guess.
Before I came to here, but was, was it living here, it, the numbers were the, way the opposite. So many more kids were going out. This was like maybe twenty.
Which is a good sign that they're not going out.
Fourteen, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, so much so that, like, it was something they felt. I used to come to school committee meetings on dates with my husband back then, before I worked here, because, yeah. And it has significantly shifted over the, I would say, ten to twelve years.
I was thinking ten years, yeah.
Been a part of Mashpee Public Schools, whether it's.
Do you have that, Ashley?
Parent or.
All right, well, she's looking at that. Any other questions or comments on the proposed seats?
I, I guess my only comment is, if we're looking at, again, the question was, do we add one seat for eleventh grade? I feel like that's such an arbitrary number to choose, you know what I mean? So I feel as though if this is the recommendation, personal opinion recommendation, that a lot of time has been spent. I don't quite understand why one seat would benefit us any more greatly than not having.
Yeah, I was just, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm just saying that a lot, you know?
So some information going back, this goes all the way back to nineteen ninety-six, but just taking a point in time. In two thousand and eleven, Mashpee sent out almost forty-four students, and they brought in three students. We brought, we had three students coming in. We now have, as of twenty-two, eighty-five students have left the district with their school choice, and we've had a hundred and twenty-five come in. And just kind of as, on the financial side, we talked about class size. And school choice, we do receive five thousand dollars per student. And the point of adding school choice students to each class is if you do have capacity to get that a little bit additional revenue to help offset your operating costs. However, our district, it costs well more than five thousand dollars to educate each student here. So for us to think about opening up at a grade level, that would make us need to hire another teacher or outfit an entire additional classroom, that doesn't always make the most sense because you're bringing in then twenty or thirty kids at one level. So that's kind of the, the pros and cons that we weigh out when we think about this.
And to clarify, that five thousand dollars is set by the state, not by, not a number we set that is.
Correct.
What is given to us.
Correct.
All right, any other thoughts or comments? Do we want to take a vote on this tonight, or would we like to defer this also to the full board or committee? Or we have to vote tonight?
Well, it opens April first.
Yep. All right, then, I will entertain a motion.
I feel comfortable, I'm making a motion to approve this presentation.
Also, can the.
All right, any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll move to vote. Dan?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
I also am a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Student Opportunity Act, S O A, plan to be filed with Desi by April first, twenty twenty-four. I believe we have this as a packet.
Yes, it looks like this. I'm gonna let Dr. Hanscom explain it. She did the bulk of the work that goes into this. It is not designed to be a plan that focuses on any reference to dollars. And it really, they're asking us, in my opinion, to take the work that we're doing and more narrowly focus to a specific population and then, but I'm gonna let Dr. Hanscom speak to it.
Nope, you said, you said it. I'm all set, are there any questions? No. I'm not gonna take a ton of time, and I definitely am not gonna go through it line by line with you because you can all read. This is a requirement based on the shift in the law that happened maybe four years ago with the Student Opportunity Act. Every three years, we need to reauthorize a plan. It started out talking about how we were gonna spend all this extra money we were gonna receive from the state, but we don't actually really receive any extra money. We receive the minimum, which is about forty thousand dollars. And I think the state realized that while the gateway cities were getting a lot of money, most districts were not. So they shifted the plan this time less about what you're gonna spend this extra windfall on that's not existent, and really more about how are you focusing on your lowest performing students? And so that's what we're doing here. Last time, our plan looked at our English learners, and we focused on hiring more teachers to support our English learners, which you all know, we've talked about and have done. We will continue to need to do that, but that's not the focus this time. This time, our, our areas of focus are on our students with disabilities and our students who come from low income households. That's what the data showed as sort of being our areas of focus. And what we plan to do with that, and it's a three-year plan, so just don't flip out until you hear it, just keep that in mind, is to hire a district-wide social worker who would be more of a macro level, not directly working with kids, but who would be a resource for staff and for families to navigate the system. So in other words, thinking about as, as families come in to register, perhaps they don't speak English. This person would be able to help them connect to the resources we have, but also the resources in the community. When a child is having a mental health crisis, this social worker would be able to help them go through the Psychology Today website and look for counselors that are, take their insurance and are accepting new patients. So it's, and then working with the teachers on, particularly at the younger level, where it's sort of more of a holistic approach. This child is having trouble eating, you know, they don't have enough to eat. Let's get them connected to Cape Kid Meals, the program that we, that we offer in school to provide weekend food. So that's what our focus is, was combining sort of the resources to meet the needs of families because we have a lot and we do a lot, but not everyone knows about it. And so having someone who's really dedicated to families and staff to be able to make sure that all the awesome stuff that we know about is really getting into the hands of the people who need it. So that, that's what we're proposing.
So just to clarify, so you, you started off saying that this three-year plan, though, is going to target our students, our students who are identified with disabilities or low income, correct?
And, yeah, or.
And or.
But it's really for all kids, it will benefit. But in doing the deep dive on the data, the students with disabilities and students who come from low income households are kind of often double counted.
Is it going to, are you looking, you know, at where they intersect?
I did, I did, in a great deal of intersection. I would say, I don't have the exact percentage, but I would say it's above seventy-five percent of an intersection, which is a whole other doctoral dissertation that somebody should do someday. And so, but what we, like I said, what we realized is we have the stuff. This committee and this town really well supports our, our, our families and our kids, and they just don't all know how to get it. And so, and then there's programs in the community that are amazing that people don't know about. So it's a gap in our service model, and we feel like this is an opportu, no pun intended, opportunity to bridge that gap over the next three years.
And part of that role is also the person working with families around school attendance and resources to support that. Because obviously, when students are not present, that does impact their outcomes, their success. And so having more of that role, because what we do find, too, is that the people that are currently working with families closely around attendance build really close relationships. And so then sometimes it becomes a little more challenging when there's a shift and you don't want to impact that relationship that you've built with the family when you have greater concerns. So it's resources.
So I'm like getting the Dawn has a question vibe. I can feel it, it's coming, it's coming.
It is. So my quick first skill of this.
Which it had, needs to be the only skim because this is due April first, and you have to vote tonight. You can vote no if you want, but you have to vote tonight.
Depends on how you answer the question. So you rely upon the, the family survey that we just went over, all right?
That is one piece of data, but it's the twenty twenty-three survey that I used. I have not analyzed the twenty twenty-four survey.
Okay.
This does list the twenty twenty.
Because we're, it's a three-year plan, so we will be using that as part of.
Okay. So we're relying upon that, it looks like heavily.
That's your word. I wouldn't say heavily, I would say the heat map, the district heat map from Desi, is what we rely on heavily when we look at the areas of deficit. Well, because I didn't give it to you. So it's the, it's our performance, uh, uh, broken down, disaggregated by subgroup academically, on attendance, on discipline, on, uh, suspensions in and out of school, all of the sort of data that they collect. That's primarily the data we used to make a decision about which subgroups we were targeting.
And that is accessible to the public.
It is, absolutely it is.
All right, because I guess from an engagement standpoint, you're relying on the family survey, and then, but you're also talking about, I guess, are you parsing this to those identified areas?
Are my what? Piercing, is that what you said? Piercing? I don't know what that word means.
Aggregated.
Mm-hmm.
Right, and because you got certain information, are you going back and then saying, okay, out of this thirty percent that responded?
Oh, are we disaggregating the survey data? Uh, I don't have an answer for you for that because I haven't looked at the survey data that we're, we don't analyze that for a while. I know Patty got excited and did a lot on it over the weekend.
We have the ability to, so having the identifiers that we have does allow our data, Christine Fisher, through Power School, to add the column that would allow us to sort in multiple ways with other student data. We don't collect that in the survey, but we have access to it in Power School.
But the satisfaction over the, how we're using the family's opinion survey data is not to find out if families of kids with disabilities or families of kids who come from low income households are more satisfied. We're looking at the aggregate for satisfaction, along with the outcomes of those subgroups to determine the efficacy of this S O A plan.
So we're bas, basically, we're taking the family survey and the student survey in that area.
Yes.
Applying it universally to our entire population, and we're tar, we're making the assumption that that action therefore suffices for this?
For the purposes of this plan, which is to determine whether the hiring of a social worker is making an increase in student achievement for those subgroups and a decrease in the negative components, like the chronic absenteeism and so forth, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, true.
I know I did.
So I have less questions about the data around it and more about the actual operationalization or operationalizing it. So I, I know the answer to this, but I'm just going to ask a lot. So the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is to be split between the three years, correct?
Yes.
Okay, which, you know, personal professional background, I think that it is a incredible ask of a social worker to look at a complete district with those needs and navigating our care continuum on Cape. So not that it is a bad plan, because I am far from saying that, but I think that it will be stretching this person incredibly thin and then adding, you know, absenteeism and all those other aspects. It's not as easy, obviously, as, you know, pulling up a Psychology Today list and figuring out who's quote-unquote accepting and not. So I guess my comments to that as it relates to this is I don't want us to create a plan that is, in some cases, prospectively set up to fail for that staff person as well as the families that are trying to be served by that person. So I just felt as though I needed to vocalize that because it is a, it's going to, it's going to be a lot of, a lot of challenges to, to getting through our, our community here.
Can I add a piece of information related to that? So in this particular school, in support of our efforts to have the social worker, we have a retiring adjustment counselor and they have two other adjustment counselors. And so the principal has basically with his team looked at that position. So we recently posted it as an adjustment counselor slash social worker where it is going to be more concretely segmented as a portion of the job is the social worker side for this school. So as we try to build that in, this particular person, I envision starting out in the sort of seven through twelve range. And we are trying to look at the counseling staff that we have as well to see how can we make sure we're allocating and still providing the services. But the decision for the caution at school to not just advertise for an adjustment counselor, but this combo is reallocating what the retiring counselor did and looking at the effectiveness of, of the roles. So some thoughts gone into that. So that's a little bit of a piece, not perfect, but it's a little bit of an improvement.
No, I'll add to that if that's okay, because you're right. Like one person could never do that. Right now, we have a variety of people doing, a variety of components of that, right? But it's not a system. And if you guys know anything about me, you know that I love a system. So the way I envision this is two-pronged. One is that this is the first step towards getting us better at having a system in place to help families. But this person would be working in conjunction with the, maybe that social worker, the data analyst that we are going to be hiring, the part-time data analyst with me, with all of the principals and the counseling staff. So this person wouldn't take on all of this by themselves. But the second piece to this is you might, as a committee, decide that this is something you want to invest in for FY twenty-six and say, okay, this is a bigger issue than just what SOA says. We need to dedicate some funding to that into the, in the FY twenty-six budget. And that's a, that I was hoping that would spark that conversation among all of us, you know, who are leading this district. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because you're right, it's an impossible task for one person.
So I'm a little confused because I thought the superintendent just said that this was going to be kind of a part of a person, an adjustment counselor slash social worker at the high school. I thought this was, you were talking hopeful about this being
Yes.
School-wide.
They're two different people.
Okay.
One's a position already in the budget that we're just reshaping a little bit.
Okay.
This is a bigger umbrella.
Okay, so this is like a social worker slash coordinator.
I mean, it's not an administrative job, but again, we're sort of going to build it as we build it.
So it's almost like this, this social worker that will be district-wide will be looking at kind of that high-level view of here's a spot in Coombe School, let me connect with the adjustment counselor in the Coombe School and say, hey, I'm noticing this, and then they'll dig in a little bit more.
Maybe. They also will work with Consuelo, Carol, our outreach coordinator, who right now is doing a lot of sort of not social work stuff, but she is connecting families with resources because of her role. So it would be somebody who would sort of own the, they'd be the sort of hub of the wheel where all these other pieces come into play. And so I can't answer like they would go to the Cooms necessarily. It might be, because I have a relationship with this family as the district-wide social worker, I'm going to be the one to go. It might not, it depends. Does that make sense?
So is this person going to be in the central office or?
I, we haven't gone that far.
This is, this, this plan really messages to DESI that we recognize that, I mean, if there was loads of funding provided through this plan, we would want to use it for increasing social workers within our district. It may end up being more than one, it's looking at sort of our current resources, but we're just trying to tell DESI what we've recognized, what we would like to do to address the problem over this three-year span.
This also is making us compliant with.
We have to do this plan.
So this is a compliance.
And we have to have, yes. And I think we looked at it as an opportunity to, to put out there into the universe what we think is, you know, a gap in, in, or it's just, we're all overtaxed, I think, right now, and this would really allow us to do it better. How we do it is, this is just the first step. We, you know, we first of all have to get this approved by DESI, well, by you, and then by DESI. Because they'll come back with edits, there's zero chance that that won't happen. But it's not, you're not deciding tonight if you, how we're doing it, you're deciding if you can, if you think the plan is a good concept.
Okay, so is it, is it fair to say that we probably have at least one full-time equivalent across the district now because we've got people doing parts of this job?
Well, we have multiple counselors who also hold their licensed social worker license. And so there's a very, there, there is overlap in their roles in terms of servicing kids and doing the social work side as well. So it's, there's already a presence in the district. We just need to enhance.
But you're saying, would we be pulling about a full-time equivalence worth of work from other, sort of, is that what you're asking?
Well, no, I'm saying currently we have people doing part of this.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I would say it's at least a full-time equivalence worth of that, yes.
And what you're, you're not suggesting, I believe, that you're taking that away. You're buttressing.
That's the, that's a great word, buttressing.
I learned that today.
Did you really? Is that true?
It goes well with the word parse for tonight.
I know, parse almost threw me, man. I'm having a hard time. But buttressing was good, yes, yes.
So in my viewpoint, if this is signaling to DESI that this is a gap area, a need area, and it's really about increasing the support for our most marginalized community members, then I, I agree. I think if, I think what I'm hearing is that how we design that, how y'all design that is the next step once all the approvals happen, which I think my comments are, it needs to be incredibly meaningfully done.
Do you want to come do it with us? I'm not, I'm not joking.
He has good expertise.
It's where, it's where my heart lies.
Exactly. We'd love the, the input.
But so, so that's my, that's why I wanted to ask, because I just wanted to ensure that not just for us as a committee, but for families who are in many ways going to be seeing someone in a position like this and are going to be putting a lot of their heart and soul and vulnerability into this person, that we're, we're doing it correctly. So I, I feel confident that the signal needs to be there. I think that the, the areas in which we've identified are, again, some of our most marginalized areas. And I think it gives us an opportunity to see how we advance the macro.
That being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Student Opportunity Act plan to be filed by DESI.
I will, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
So good.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Dan?
I vote yes.
Don?
Yes.
I also am a yes.
Thank you so much, for real. I really appreciate the confidence and support.
All right. A couple more items, we'll get through this. Monday, April eighth is the next quarterly drop-in Zoom with our two members, Mr. Davis and Mr. Rodriguez.
I'll also.
And Andrew. I was going to say, you're not listed here, but I did write and Andrew, to discuss superintendent evaluations and student advisory committee. So tune in, that's a great series. I know we've done two so far. I enjoyed, I enjoyed the two I did, and I think it's helpful. So if you ever have questions about school committee, you can still view the two that have happened on our website, on the school's website, the district, rather, sorry. Determine the date for the, I'm wondering if we need, well, this one has determined the date for the Mashpee Public Schools Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe Joint Meeting, which currently June twenty-sixth is the preferred date for the tribe, which that is a what?
I think it's a Wednesday.
It's the last Wednesday of June.
So. How's it right now? I have no issue with that date?
I don't know if it would be me going to, so I can't really comment.
You're graduated by then, so.
Yeah.
I'd say, you can come if you want, but
Yeah.
I would say your successor
Yeah.
Probably would benefit more from that.
I know, I was just saying that, like.
I'm sure the whole, if the whole whoever's left would like to, or whoever newly appointed would, or elected would like to.
I'll just make sure to
Yes, please.
Help them. Be there. And I'm sure at this time it does work for me.
Okay. I know, Don, that's kind of start a ice cream season, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. We have two members not present.
And just an FYI, I know it's your meeting, I'm not available, I'm away the last two weeks of June.
Okay.
But it's your meeting anyway.
So then is, maybe we revisit at our next meeting?
Yes, I agree.
I think we also need to start thinking about, from a creative perspective, the agenda.
Yes. Agreed. I know last year it was myself and Matt who attended the joint meeting. We had, we had a very robust discussion, so, but I agree, we should start considering. So at the next meeting, I guess I asked that if you have agenda items that you would like to discuss that are pertaining to both the tribe, whether it's students or from us as well, that we can put on the agenda for discussion, that would be appreciated. And I guess also any additional proposed dates that could work for that. And then we, I'm sorry.
Sorry, may I ask, in anticipation of that, can we reach back out to them to see if they have any other dates that may work for their schedule?
Yes, so we, originally, there were four dates. There were two dates in, in July and two in June, maybe? I forget. And then they, so we had those on the original agenda, and then they got back to us and said that that was the date. So the July dates, I don't know, they didn't go with those?
So I guess if we could just revisit and say,
Yeah.
You know, it seems like this, there may be a glitch here. Can we reconsider?
I, I personally do think it is good for you to be there, Superintendent DeBoer, just because I feel your input at those meetings is just as valuable as our input at those meetings. So I don't know, I, I would kind of like to have you there.
I would like to be there.
So, okay. And then last, or almost last, we've got our list of upcoming events, which I think all of the principals pretty much highlighted for us during their fair outs. So I'm going to let everybody read that on their phone if you have questions. But also feel free, remember, one of our goals as school committee members is to attend various things and
Like cultural game night.
Like cultural.
Yeah.
Well, to be honest, had by all.
All right. Are there any items the chair did not reasonably know in advance or agenda item requests that anyone might have?
Can we just take a second to kind of talk about the superintendent's evaluation and the timing of, of events related to that?
Yes, we could have that little chart we make for you at the next, on the third. I know, I think the subcommittee is meeting like on the fourth. So this subcommittee, evaluation subcommittee meets on the fourth?
Of April.
April.
And then I think I'm presenting to the committee at the other April meeting? I think there's a later April meeting?
Is there two, again?
April tenth.
We have two, because the third is with the student advisory and then we have our regular.
So according to Sherry, it's the tenth.
The tenth of April?
I don't know.
Well, because April, it would have to be, because the next week would be.
Of my goals. Yeah, and then we'll have that schedule set up for, we've done it in the past, where, okay, you've got this, you got this amount of time.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm just trying to anticipate.
I think it's generally that you do the public evaluation, that first meeting in May, because then the committee changes.
Yes. Are there any student advisory committee members who wanted to be, I don't know if you guys had that discussion of anybody wanting to join any of the subcommittees or working groups?
I've talked to them, they've all expressed that they're too busy.
Okay, fair enough.
How about this stuff?
Understood. Just wanted to make sure. Who was asked?
We really appreciate the thought.
Okay. Sherry said May first is the meeting that I, that you evaluated.
Evaluation.
Okay, and so, please, so, May first?
Subcommittee meets on April fourth. April tenth, she presents her, her
But on the third, do we have a meeting on the third?
The third is the student advisory.
Okay, well, we can give you this plan, the dates. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, because I'm just trying to think ahead of what that time period is that we have as committee members.
We'll have pretty much
To complete our, to complete the evaluation, we should be knowing that
Well, so, okay, so, yeah, May, so the tenth, the tenth
You need to buy yours to the chair.
The tenth, I'm giving you my date, my data. And so you have from the tenth, probably
Let's say the twenty-fourth, because that's
You need to give the chair time to do it.
Okay.
I would say April twenty-fourth, because that's two weeks from the tenth, and then that gives me a week.
That works good, yeah.
Gives me about a week to get everything compiled and put together?
Yeah.
If that is okay with everyone?
Yes.
Cheryl, Sherry, did you get those dates, just so when I did the chart?
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth is when the members, so on the eleventh, we generally send out the Google Forms the very next day, and then you have that time, so
And then I have a, yeah, and then I'll have a week to compile and
I just follow that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Don, for putting that on the radar. Anything else? Okay. I will entertain the final motion of the night, please, and thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Oh, we did have, well, he made a motion to adjourn, so Robert will say we don't really go forward after that motion.
Huh? Let's do seven.
It does, but, all right. Do you want to withdraw your motion to cover this letter very quickly?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll draw that motion.
Thank you. We did have one other item that was presented to us tonight regarding the incident that happened overnight in Mashpee where a hateful message was spray painted upon a business in town. Superintendent DeBoer crafted this letter that it looks like has, has it already gone out?
It's been out at five o'clock.
Went out to families tonight, reiterating that Mashpee Public Schools is a no place for hate.